Good evening and welcome to the San Bruno City Council Meeting of October 28th, 2014. I'd like to thank the Garden Club for the flowers they always provide for our meetings. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Salazar.
Here.
Councilmember O'Malley.
Here.
Councilmember Ibarra.
Here.
Vice Mayor Dean.
Here.
Mayor Verlaine.
Here. Carol, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
My allegiance to the Father, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have a few announcements this evening. The first, there will not be a city council meeting in November 11th, 2014, which is a legal holiday. According to the municipal code, any regular city council meeting that falls on a legal holiday shall be held the next business day, and the regular meeting of November 12th, 2014, will be canceled. Couple of other announcements. The Halloween Parade, the annual Halloween Parade will be held at the shops in Tanfran on Halloween, Friday, October 31st. Children ages one to five are welcome to join the parade at 3:30. The parade for children in first through fourth grade begins at 4:15. The Goblin Grotto, with rain likely on Friday night, there may be many children looking for a safe, dry, and fun way to celebrate Halloween. Tickets for the city's annual Goblin Grotto at the Recreation Center Thursday, October 30th. Two time slots are available, 5:30 and 6:45, for kids to trick or treat, play carnival games, and hear stories from the Good Witch. I'm going to be there, okay? Tickets are $7 per child and is open to children 10 and under. Tickets are available at the Recreation Center located at 251 City Parkway, across from the City Park. The La Peninsula Journal, in the last few days, San Bruno Centennial Edition of the La Peninsula Journal was delivered to mailboxes throughout San Bruno. The centennial commemorative edition of the journal is a joint project of the city and the San Mateo County Historical Association. A special edition of La Peninsula Historical Milestones, which makes San Bruno special and provides a do-it-yourself guide to the historical walking tour of our town. The city council and I hope you enjoy this special look at San Bruno's history, and we thank the San Mateo County Historical Association for their partnership. And finally, the Centennial Gala, tickets are on sale. Also, the city's year-long centennial celebration culminates in December with the city's presentation of the Centennial Gala. The gala semi-formal event will be held at Skyline College on Saturday, December 6th, 2014, between 6:00 and 11:00 p.m. The gala is open to all adults over 21 years of age. Tickets are now on sale for $100, which, by the way, is heavily subsidized, at the Recreation Center located at 251 City Parkway, or by calling 650-616-7187. The ticket price includes valet parking, beer, wine, and soft drinks, dinner, live music, dancing, and a very special centennial commemorative gift. And no-host bar will also be available for mixed drinks. We hope you will enjoy us at this celebration of San Bruno's 100th birthday. Item number four, we have some presentations this evening. The first is to receive a presentation from the Housing Endowment and Regional Trust of San Mateo County, or HART.
Good evening, Mayor Ruane and council members. I'm Mark Moulton, I'm the Executive Director of HART. I came prepared to show a PowerPoint tonight, which you, alas, will not see, but you may receive a copy of it. I'll try and be coherent and brief. My story is not as bad as what's happening to the Giants, that's for sure.
Right.
So, first of all, you're a long-term member of HART, and we thank you. The Housing Endowment and Regional Trust is lucky to have Councilmember Ibarra representing you on our Board of Directors. Our mission is to meet critical housing needs in San Mateo County by raising funds from public and private sources. So, how do we do that? Basically, as a local housing trust fund, we go after everything from private contributions, grants, loans, public grants, revenue, and member dues. And we're governed by a joint powers authority, which is why we are able to have a regional point of view and to have elected members also serve in this countywide point of view about housing that has 19 of the 20 cities in the county of San Mateo as members. We also have a 501(c)(3), which comes in handy if somebody wants to give you money. Our accomplishments so far are that we have funding in 962 homes here in San Mateo County, and we've done total loans of almost $13 million. What do we do? How do we do it? First of all, we make loans to developers of, nonprofit developers of affordable housing. We do permanent financing, leave our money in, we do short-term loans, medium-term loans, and we also now have a new rapid grants program, which at some point I'd like to come back, maybe, and explain to you. And if you get an opportunity to come to our lunch in May, we will definitely highlight. So, what are the kinds of things we've done in San Bruno with this program? Think about the Village and the Crossing, that is, got a $1,007 worth of heart money in it, 228 affordable rentals for low-income seniors. The other thing that we do is a first-time homebuyer program, and most cities at the end of RDA lost their ability to do first-time homebuyer programs if they had them. And so, we're continuing to make loans. We have all the details on this, and Carol has annual reports for you and details on our first-time homebuyer program. I won't keep you with that, but it's an opportunity. Right now, we've loaned $3.2 million to 56 families in San Mateo County. And in San Bruno, eight families have purchased homes. I was going to talk about the Glenn Ruiz family, who grew up in San Bruno, went to Berkeley, and works at a biotech startup, and his wife works as a childcare provider. They actually bought the fixer-upper home next door to his parents in 2010. So, I think that's automatic babysitting. So, that goes for doors open. So, what's next? We're trying to raise more money. I'll come back and talk to you about that later. That includes looking at state funds, what's left, also an EQ2 program from Wells Fargo, which we once had, $1 million, we're going back after it. The long-term goals that we have are many, and you'll see it in the PowerPoint. But one thing I wanted to mention was, as you come in the door here, just, one of the things we want to do is work with community partners for focus on PDAs and a regional approach to development. We're big admirers of your planning process in downtown. And with that, I want to thank you. I'll be happy to take any questions, and I'll also be happy to scurry away. I know you've got a full agenda.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
I don't have any questions. I want to thank Mark for coming and being gracious in condensing his remarks. It was my main interest to be a part of HART when the vacancy came open, because without our redevelopment, I needed to know how this community could provide affordable housing. And it's not going to happen in a five-minute presentation. It's going to happen over a series of presentations, you know, over the course of the next few years, to see how we're going to implement our transit corridors plan, and how we're going to do, you know, some of the projects that we have tonight. So, thank you. And I also want to thank HART and the Entrepreneur Center of Skyline College for hosting the successful first-time homebuyers workshop. We did, I heard some great things that came out of there last month. So, we do that again. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Councilmember Ibarra.
Thank you very much. Our second presentation is, we're going to receive a presentation of the Centennial Oral History Project and Historical Timeline Projects.
Thank you so much. I'll see you again. All right. Bye-bye.
Can you all hear me? Hi, my name's Kathleen O'Connell. I'm going to talk a little bit about two projects the San Bruno Library has been working on to celebrate the centennial. Let me get the first one set up for you. Two projects the San Bruno Library has been working on to celebrate the centennial, which are useful for this year, and we hope will also have enduring historic value in the years to come. The first project is our history timeline, which is on the screen right now. It was created with the support of a Pacific Library Partnership Grant. This interactive timeline presents San Bruno's history from 1849 to the present. It includes 80, more than 80 events, which can be clicked on to display more information. Most of these events also include historic photographs, oral clips from oral histories, historic film, and links to external content. Most of this content was found in the San Bruno Library's own historic collections, which also include an extensive collection of newspaper clippings, scrapbooks, and other memorabilia from San Bruno's past. This timeline has also been enriched by items that have been sent in by interested San Brunons, who we would like to thank for their contribution. The purpose of this timeline is to really delve into San Bruno's history and find things that are both well-known, and get more information, and find things that are less well-known. We wanted to make San Bruno's history interesting and accessible, both the events themselves and the artifacts that describe those events, most of which would otherwise be inaccessible or difficult access in our historical collections. I'd like to mention the importance of the previous research that has been done on San Bruno's history, particularly the work of Frederick, or, excuse me, Daryl Fredericks, whose work provided a major resource for the timeline. The timeline was made public at the Centennial Carnival on September 27th. Since then, around 50 people have viewed it. We really hope to increase the exposure through this presentation and information on the Centennial website. This project has a great deal of importance for the current centennial celebrations. It supports the increased interest in San Bruno's history and allows San Brunons to discover more about their community, both the events themselves and the artifacts that describe them. For example, the history of Tanfran, the history of the SFO Airport, as well as a number of local businesses and community organizations. We also hope that it will have continued importance. It will serve as a permanent record for San Brunons, as well as a resource for the city as a whole, and especially the library and local teachers and students. We also hope that we will be able to add new events to the timeline as the years go by, and make it a real living record of the city's history. Let me give you a short demonstration of the timeline. If I can get it to open right. Momentarily. This is the beginning of the history timeline. It starts in 1849 with the founding of Uncle Tom's Cabin, which stood at the intersection of El Camino Real and San Mateo Avenue. If you click on an event, there you go. It'll give you more information, and this includes a link to more information about the Uncle Tom's Cabin. To move, you can click, click and drag to see the rest of the timeline. Sorry, this is giving me, there we go. You can also go to a specific year that you want to see. This right here is the celebrations in 1914 for the city's incorporation. It includes photographs and a clip from an oral history that's currently not showing very well, sorry. Also includes links to more oral histories and more photographs. It's also possible to search and filter this timeline, both the title and the description. This is showing pieces that describe the history of El Camino Real. And this timeline also goes all the way to the present, so it includes events all the way to 2014, including the San Bruno Fire and the subsequent reconstruction efforts. Okay, our second project is an oral history project. The timeline really deals with the events of San Bruno's past. The oral history project works to collect and preserve the memories of our citizens. It's called the San Bruno Stories Project. Over the past six months, we have interviewed 25 San Brunons who have shared their memories and experiences of San Bruno, and we would very much like to thank them for their contribution to San Bruno's history. The richness of this project has been greatly increased by the participation of a true centurion. Mrs. Catherine Murphy gave us an interview, and she's also celebrating her 100th birthday this year. Let's see. These stories have been collected to, so they can be shared, and also so they can be preserved for San Bruno's future. One story from each interview has been added to the San Bruno Stories page. I would encourage everyone to go take a look and listen to some of them. They're actually quite interesting and very good listening. There's also a companion collection called the San Bruno Voices Collection. It's a group of 10 oral histories that were created during the U.S. Bicentennial in 1976. It includes stories from some of San Bruno's founding families, which share their memories of San Bruno going back to the 1800s. Clips from these interviews are also on the Centennial website, on the corresponding San Bruno Voices page, and include reminiscences from such early residents as Teresa Beltramo and George Genovin. Both sets of oral histories were made public on September 27th, are also at the carnival. Since then, they have been listened to nearly 500 times, and we hope that number will continue to grow. We are still conducting oral history interviews. There will be three more, three oral history days held at the rec center. There's more information about that on the Centennial website. And just very quickly, I'll show you the two pages. This is the San Bruno Stories Project page, and it is also currently not displaying, and my apologies. Normally, it shows a list of the interview clips with a picture of each person who has been interviewed. The San Bruno Voices page probably won't quite show either, but this is the, excuse me, this is the clips of the oral histories that talk more directly about San Bruno's past. That's all I have for you. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Katie? I just want to say you've done a great job, you and your team, which is probably just you.
I've had a lot of help, but thank you.
No, you have had. You have had. I've looked at it myself, and it's, once you get into it, it's, wait a minute, I want to hear what she has to say, I want to hear what he has to say. Keep going and going. You've done a wonderful job.
I'm glad you enjoyed it. Anyone else?
Anyone else? Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Katie. Presentation C, we're going to present a proclamation declaring, excuse me, October 2014 is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and I'll read this. City Council of the City of San Bruno, State of California, whereas October 2014 is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and whereas an estimated 232,670 new cases of female breast cancer will be diagnosed in 2014, and 40,000 will die from this disease. And whereas an estimated 2,360 new cases of male breast cancer will be diagnosed in 2014, and 430 will die of the disease. And whereas screenings, early detection, and prompt treatment can significantly reduce suffering and death caused by this disease, and whereas mammography and x-ray of the breast is recognized as the single most effective method of detecting breast changes, and may be cancer long before physical symptoms can be seen or felt. Now therefore, I, Jim Ruane, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2014 as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the city of San Bruno, and encourage all residents to support the efforts of the foundations who will contribute funds to support research and find a cure. And I'm going to give this to our very own survivor, Irene O'Connell.
Just very quickly, I was noting that today, a year ago today, actually today, was when I heard my second diagnosis for breast cancer. So, this is very timely, and I found out about it through mammograms, and there was no other physical symptoms. So, it's my second time, and you can survive it. It's not fun to go through the treatments, but that's what they're for, to make you well. And I encourage everyone who, daughters, sisters, everyone that you love and care for, to make sure that they get the care they need. So, thank you.
Thank you. Item number five, review of the agenda. I would like to move items 10A and 10B under conduct of business to write before public hearings. Any other changes on the agenda? Okay. Approval of the minutes of the special city council meeting of October 14th, 2014, and regular council meeting of October 14th, 2014, any errors, corrections, or omissions? Seeing none to be approved as submitted. On the consent calendar, all items are considered routine or implemented earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested by a council member, citizen, or staff. We have a request from a member of the public to remove items 7D, 7E, and 7F, and staff has the questions presented regarding these items, and I will let staff respond in a few moments. Any action on the remainder of the consent calendar?
If there be nothing else, I'll move to approve items A through C.
Second.
A motion of second on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item 7D, report on emergency preparedness activities. The constituent says, I request a short report to the residents on how the city has updated the city's emergency preparedness activities. This report should be shared with the community in an open session, not buried as a consent item. So, we have a report on that.
Honorable mayor members of the city council, my name's Dave Cresta, Battalion Chief with the San Bruno Fire Department, and I appreciate the opportunity to give you an update on the status of our emergency preparedness program. As you know, the position was filled in May, and the idea was to use the position to coordinate all emergency preparedness with all the departments in the city, as well as the county OES and Emergency Managers Association. It was important to learn from challenges faced by the Glenview Fire to be prepared for any future disasters, and the goal was to improve in all phases of emergency preparedness, including preparedness, planning, mitigation, response, and recovery. Since obviously training plays a critical role in preparedness, that's been our primary focus so far. In the month of May, we trained approximately 40 staff members who would fill a role in the EOC in Web EOC. Web EOC is a computer-based resource tracking system that has been adopted by the State Emergency Services and will be used in future disasters. During a disaster, public employees are required to serve as disaster service workers. And so, during June and July, we provided that state-required training to 132 full-time employees. That training consists of ICS 100 and 700. And also, in coordination with human resources, we have developed a program where all new employees will get that training as part of their orientation. We've started a series of workshops and exercises that have started and will go through the year, on October 2nd, designated EOC staff tenet workshop and table-tap exercise on multi-agency coordination. The San Mateo Office of Emergency Services will be conducting a series of four multi-agency exercises throughout the county. These exercises are designed to prompt a region-wide response that will require multiple EOCs to be open during each exercise, in an effort to coordinate using unified command and that multi-agency coordination concept. On December 3rd, REFC will be open as part of the Central County Drill. It will be a functional exercise to test the cohesive capability of the operational area. As a run-up to that training, in December, we'll, probably in the middle of November, we'll do some section-specific training for each part of the EOC management, operations, planning, logistics, and finance, to get them prepared for that. Additionally, CERT, we completed a CERT class, which was about 30 residents, primarily from Shelter Creek. We completed that in June, and we're in the process of scheduling an additional CERT class, probably, depending on the holidays, will start either toward the end of the year or beginning of next year. We have about 30 residents that are interested in that, and we're just trying to figure out a time and a schedule that works for everybody. And just to finish up additionally after that, the focus will shift to our Emergency Operations Plan, which will be due to be revised, and that document is based on the county Emergency Operations Plan, which should be complete by the end of the year, and ours will be based on that. That's all I have. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Thank you very much for the explanation.
Through the chair.
Michael?
I have a few questions on this, and it's actually interesting that I had it on my mind to bring this up. There was an article that was published recently in the, what is this, the Western City Magazine that we get periodically. And it actually talked about having disaster plans and making sure that the city council is involved in this. So, one of the questions I had is, at any point, is there a plan to include us in some sort of training? I know that when, during the Glenview Fire, we, none of us here were really prepared and had no idea what we were supposed to be doing as part of that response. And I mean, I had been on the council a fairly short time, and I know I didn't really know what to do, and I know we were all kind of guessing, trying to figure it out as we went along. So, if at some point we could be included in some of that training, just so that we know what our role is supposed to be, what's expected of us during those situations, I think that would be very useful. I had also asked shortly after the explosion and fire about doing some sort of lessons learned, interviewing the people that were involved, everybody that was in the EOC, trying to collect as much data as we could while it was still fresh in everyone's mind, in terms of what worked well and what didn't work well, where we needed improvement, where communication broke down. I know a lot of time has passed, but I'm wondering if any of that was done as part of preparing our current emergency plan?
Yes. First off, your first question, there is no required training for city officials, however, there is training. There's specific ICS class for executives like yourself, and some, there's a general idea that probably should have ICS 100 and 700, and we can't, a couple of ways we can provide that to you. It is on FEMA website. We can give that information, and you could take an online class and take a test to get certified, or we can certainly arrange an instructor for that, and we can look into that further. Your second question, after any disaster Glenview included, there's after-action reports, and part of my job was to review those reports. I also have interviewed just about everybody that played a critical role in the EOC. I reviewed several documents that were prepared, both by OES and the city, and have kind of made a list of those things, of things that need to be improved, and that's going to be addressed in much of this updated training.
Okay. And as far as the revised plan, you mentioned that you're still working on a revised plan. When is that expected to be completed?
So, the county should finish theirs by the end of the year, and ours, it needs to be vetted by the state. Once it's done, it'll come down, and our plan will be based upon that plan. So, until, basically, there's working groups within the Emergency Managers Association. We're beginning that process now, but until that final product comes out from county, we really can't take those last few steps.
And just to get an idea, how old is our current plan?
Our current plan is current. It just, it needs to be revised every three years, and now we're up to that. So, I think it was revised 2011 or so.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You bet. Through the chair, really quick, Councilmember Salazar, there is training for electeds. I've taken two classes. Usually, you'll have electeds. One was in the city of Milbrae, which a couple attended, and one in the city of San Mateo. The class is long, because you have nothing but much of elected, so we tend to talk and ask a lot of questions. So, aside from that, it's beneficial. There are classes, and with the OES, they can offer that, usually would be after the holidays, and those are ones you can go in person. As the chief said, there are stuff as well as online. The one in the city of Milbrae was more of exercise in preparation for the unknown and uncertain. As we know, back in 2010, that was not only unexpected, but it was something that nobody could have planned for, could have had an exercise or drill for. So, once again, thinking back to that night on the hill with the mayor, I think the staff and the council and the citizen reacted exemplary. So, we have a lot to learn and a lot to improve upon, and that's why I'm very happy about the position that I thought was important to go forward, that you stand there before us today, and we plan for the unexpected, because it can happen and it will happen again. So, thank you.
Anything else? Action on item 7D?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion second on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. The next item that the resident wanted some talk about is adopt a resolution, 7E, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager and the city attorney to execute escrow documents to complete the purchase of 324 Florida Avenue by the city of San Bruno and appropriating $604,000 from the Park In Lou Fund, and up to $10,000 from the General Fund. He requests that since this item was discussed in closed session, I and the residents deserve to know in open session, a little background and justification for this action. Did the resident ask the city to purchase their property, or did the city go to the resident and make the statement along the lines of, we do not approve of how you're keeping up your personal residence, so we will be purchasing your residence? Is the city now planning to take personal residential property if it does not like the way the resident is keeping it up?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the-
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the answer to the last question first, and then I'll give you a little bit of background, because I think the last question is particularly important. As the city council knows, this city has a broad-based policy that is insinuated into our transit corridor plan and I believe into our general plan as well, that the city does not, it was certainly in our redevelopment plan, that the city does not intend, has never, and as I said, does not intend to use eminent domain to take residential property under any circumstances, and that was certainly not the case in this situation. In fact, although this property has been in a declining and deteriorated state for many years now, it has some historic significance, and it was the interest of the property owner who actually approached us. We had some previous conversations at our planning counter with individuals who had an interest in the development potential of the property and had made inquiries of our staff, and it was in that line of discussion that we became aware that the property was in place, so to speak. The owner is an elderly woman whose grandparents originally purchased the property and used it in part as a, it was a family home, and was used in part by her grandfather as a woodshop. He was a master woodworker from Switzerland. Is that correct? And actually, the purchase of the property comes along with a very exquisite piece of, very large piece of carving that this gentleman produced many years ago. As I indicated, the property is in a deteriorated state of repair, and the owner is no longer able to maintain it, and for many years has not resided at the property. The city's interest upon, are being approached in understanding that the property might be available for sale. The property owner expressed an interest that it would please them to know that the property was being used for public purposes, for others potentially to enjoy, as her family had enjoyed it for many, many years. This is an area of our city that does not have a great deal of open space. It is actually a fairly compact and heavily populated area of the city, and it was with those considerations that the city council initiated discussion about possible purchase of the property with the potential intent of using the property for park or open space purposes, although there has been no conclusion or decision reached about how or when or for what the property might be improved. In the near term, it is the intent to, following acquisition of the property, to move to demolition of the property, and there is some remediation in the soils that needs to be accomplished in order for the area to be turned into something that could be used by the public eventually. So, those are both the anticipated near term and next steps related to the property.
All right. Thank you. Council's well aware of what we did. Any additional questions or action on item 7E?
Mr. Mayor, sorry, before you do move, I noticed there's a typo in the resolution. I apologize. The amount from the Park in Lou Fund, as stated throughout both the staff report and the third paragraph of the resolution, is $604,000. I see that later in the resolution, it says $640,000. That should be 604 at the end, so I apologize for that, but I'm glad we caught it.
All right. Can we just pass this? We don't have to introduce the resolution?
There is a resolution for...
But it was under consent, so we can just pass it.
You can make a motion adopting it, that's right.
Okay. There are motion to...
Do we have some other comments?
Yeah, you got one minute. Yes.
Good evening. This is great news for my neighborhood, Marty Medina Garden Avenue. I walk by the vacant property every day, Monday through Friday, to pick up my son to a daycare, and it's great knowing that it's also a Switzerland connection, because my son is a quarter Swiss, and I just wanted to commend you for getting that property. It's been an eyesore, a nuisance. I heard the rumor, we've talked to the daycare people, and it'd be a great place for a park, and I really urge that we could immediately turn that into a park, and be willing to help out and get some volunteers to go over there and put some place structure equipment, because that property definitely is a prime location for a park. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Any action on item 7E?
Move to accept.
Second.
Motion is second on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Opposed? Opposed?
I'm opposed.
You're opposed?
No.
Through the chair.
Did you say?
I said no.
Okay.
Are you opposed?
Yes.
3-2.
3-2.
Mr. Medina and Mr. Salazar? No?
Thank you.
Through the chair.
Yes.
Just wanted to briefly explain, I have, since this has been under discussion, my heart would say yes, but my, the looking for the city's assets and the future is where I have my concern. I do think that the building needs to come down. I've been walking it and driving it constantly, meeting the neighbors in the area, trying to assess what their needs are, and it is an eyesore. And yes, since it will be purchased, it does need to come down. The city needs to lead by example. I know we have parks in throughout this community, we just had an interview from somebody who thinks our fields are not in the best of condition. I know we just hired a parks maintenance person, because we're trying to maintain what we have. So, I believe we always need to take care of first and foremost what we have and invest in, this is a great opportunity, so this is why I was a little torn, but I do know that it had been on the market back in 2012 for about $599,000, I found that out, wasn't able to be sold, and though, like I said, I am only concerned because of the fact, my vote was the way, when we purchased the Wells Fargo lot before I was on the council, that sat for quite a bit of time as a fence and weeds, and then it became obviously what it is today, which still some people feel it isn't, doesn't meet its full expectation. So, that was the reason for my no vote, though. As I've made clear to my colleagues, with it being purchased, I do want to see it torn down, and I want to see it leveled and clean for the neighborhood.
Thank you. You have the vote, Carol. Okay. Item 7F, Adopt a Resolution Authorizing the City Manager and the City Attorney to Execute a Purchase and Sale Agreement and Associated Escrow Documents for the Sale of 981 Glenview Drive, 1110 Glenview Drive, and 1641 Claremont Drive by the City of San Bruno to Castle Companies, Inc. I request a short report on this proposed action and the dollar amounts that should be received by the city.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This item has been discussed on at least two previous occasions in open session of the city council at regularly scheduled meetings, and as a result of an RFP that was issued by the city in 2013, at which time the city requested proposals from qualified developers to construct houses on ten vacant lots in the Crestmore neighborhood that was damaged by fire in 2010. Three of those lots are currently owned by the city. They came into city ownership by settlement with PG&E as part of our restitution award or settlement of our negotiations with PG&E for restitution. Seven of the lots, seven of the ten are owned by PG&E, and they were acquired as part of PG&E's program to assist residents in the neighborhood who determined that, following destruction of their houses, they did not wish to return and rebuild. So, for a total of ten lots, the city sought qualified developers who would build, who had the financial wherewithal and track record and design sensibility that would provide for compatible housing to be built to finish out the restoration of the neighborhood. Castle Companies was a successful proposer. The selection process was completed by the city council a number of months ago, and we have reached the point in this process where we need to enter into an actual purchase and sale agreement that will conclude the, will be the completion of the transfer of the real estate in order that Castle can move forward with plans for, and design and development scheduling for the construction of the houses. As part of the RFP process, the city asked qualified developers to provide the purchase price at which they would be willing to purchase the lots. Castle, and I'm sorry that I'm not remembering if they were the highest proposing developer or at least the second highest, their purchase price offered was $415,000 per lot, and again, three of those lots are owned by, three of the ten lots are owned by the city, so the city will receive as purchase price $415,000 per lot for a total of $1,245,000. Those funds will be transferred to the restitution fund and will come $5,000 shy of the $70 million total value of that fund as it was negotiated with PG&E. And the next steps in this process involve the actual execution of the purchase and sale agreement, the...
There will be.
The final completion of a development agreement that would be presented and approved by the city council, and then, as I mentioned before, design and construction plan development by Castle Company. We still hope that construction of the properties, it can begin sometime during the year 2015. We had originally hoped that development could begin as early as the spring. It appears now, given the schedule and where we are, that that is not possible, but we do anticipate having homes ready to be occupied in 2016 and are very much looking forward to that, to coincide or come very shortly after the public infrastructure work is completed in that neighborhood, and we can finally see complete closure to restoration of that neighborhood. Thank you.
I think it should be mentioned, just as an aside, that the city did not drag its feet on this. PG&E took an extra six months or more to sign the agreement, so we've been waiting for that, and I believe it's here coming momentarily, so...
That's correct.
Any action on item...
Move to approve?
Through the chair. If I could make a comment before we vote on that?
Apologize.
I did have a comment.
Go ahead, Michael.
No problem. Sorry. The only comment I had on this, and I know that there was a lot of frustration up in the neighborhood about this taking as long as it did, and I have a letter here that we got on September 22nd to that fact, and I just did want to comment that in the staff report, I mean, the first date listed here is March 12th, 2012, so two and a half years later, and I know that there's a number of reasons why this was delayed, but this really did take way too long. I didn't mention anything on the park issue, but one of my concerns is that the city has demonstrated that it takes us a very long time to get things done. I think this exemplifies it. You know, by taking on this park project, I mean, we're expending pretty much all our Park in Lou funds for a lot that's going to have to be remediated. We're talking about a total cost that's not even, not even been defined yet, how we're going to pay for that park when we get around to building it, and if it's going to be two and a half years later, I think there's going to be a lot of frustration from the neighborhood, and it's not a situation that I like to be in, where I have to try to explain to the voters why it takes this long to get things done. So, like I said, I know that there are reasons why these things take so long, but this really does seem to be way too long, and I have to wonder if we had let PG&E sell these lots, would there be houses there now? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else?
If not, I'll move to approve.
Motion is second to approve item F. On the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There we go. We're going to go right to items 10A and 10B, which were brought up. 10A is Adopt a Resolution Accepting a Donation of the Centennial Time Capsule from the San Bruno Rotary Club.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the Rotary Club of San Bruno has generously, and again, approached the city about providing a donation of a time capsule that would commemorate the city's centennial and would be placed in a prominent location that, in order that it can be kind of a permanent reminder of the city's legacy of 100 years and be remembered 100 years hence, at which time that, I'm sorry, 50 years hence, at which time it would be considered to be opened. The concept of the time capsule was first identified and discussed with the community at the Community Day in the Park on September 27th, at which time Rotary Club had solicited from community organizations and individuals items that they wanted to contribute to be included in the time capsule. Many items were collected, and that effort is still continuing, so that interested organizations are welcome to contact Rotary Club to provide their items in order that they might be included, if possible, in the time capsule. The representative of the Rotary Club has met with myself and two members of the city council to review locations around the City Hall complex as a location to bury the time capsule and to place a marker, so that it could be visible and known to the community. A space outside the back door to City Hall on the Linden Street frontage, just off the pathway to, leading to the back door in an area that is now part of the grass in the back of City Hall, has been identified as a desirable location for the time capsule to be buried. The time capsule itself will measure approximately two feet by three feet, and as I indicated, so it can hold a fair amount of stuff that should be fun for people to see and get a glimpse of life when they open it up in 2064. The marker that the Rotary Club is proposing would be a, is in your packet, would measure approximately 24 by 18, I'm sorry, 36 by 18 inches, would rise at a diagonal to a height of approximately eight inches, and would be inscribed with the following wording, "One of the things that we would like to confirm with you tonight is whether this wording is appropriate and acceptable to the city council." A seal of the Rotary Club of San Bruno, the city seal, and then the wording is follows, "Centennial Time Capsule Provided to the City of San Bruno by the Rotary Club of San Bruno, December 23rd, 2014, to be opened December 23rd, 2064." And as you know, December 23rd, 2014, 2014 is the actual 100th anniversary of our city's incorporation, so that Rotary is further proposing that we commemorate that historic event with a small gathering and celebration of actually putting the time capsule in the ground, so that it can be opened in that same location 50 years from now. So, with that, again, Rotary is looking for the city council's acceptance of this donation, as well as confirmation... as well as confirmation or proposed changes to the wording as they have identified. Thank you.
Any questions for city manager?
Through the chair. I want to thank the Rotary Club for this generous offer. I'm just curious, do we have a, an estimated amount that, that they are funding? It says in the staff report that they are funding the entire plaque, the container, the capsule, and the installation. So is that a, an unknown, or is that just something that has, has to be developed?
Well, let me, let me first clarify that Rotary has requested, and the city has confirmed that it has the ability to dig the hole. So with the exception of that work effort, not insignificant.
You've got to do a USA ticket, and you've got to make sure there's
We've already, we've already USA'd the location, and we are at this point confident that there's no underground impediments. But I do not have a dollar value, and I can certainly request that of Rotary. They may not have it kneeled down as of yet, but you're correct, Rotary has offered the donation of all costs. Okay, so I do have it. It's $2,500. And I'm sorry to say, I don't know if that's just for the marker.
It's for the capsule, the concrete area that they installed in the property.
So just to be safe, because I kind of heard a number, but let's say it's between $2,500 and $3,500, somewhere in that range, just to be safe.
I, I think it's, I mean, this is, this, for those that don't see it, I mean, it's, it's similar to what you might see in a cemetery.
I think that's a fair statement.
I mean, I, it's, it's like the ground monuments that you see in a cemetery, and I believe this is probably going to be a bronze plaque, you know, with the, but yeah, I mean, that's, that's a good, that's a good price.
So I believe that it is actually a marble or some sort of stone with another piece of stone that is, so it's not a bronze plaque, it's a, it's a stone with engraving on it.
Through the chair, it just, it is engraved, so they were thinking of long-term, and obviously, we'll all not be here, at least sitting here, we know that. But also, as you go out of the senior center, if you look to your right, is a time capsule back for this facility. And a few things that we did learn, the mayor and I were on the subcommittee, is it's not dated. So we know when it went in, but there is no, nobody can find as to when was it envisioned for it to be opened. And we thought about this year, but everybody thought it was a little too soon. So this clearly defines that, and there is, once it is celebrated, that there'll be a resolution. So there is historical as to where it is, what's in it, so that we have a record, because there's a lot of stories of time capsules around City Hall, but a lot of us have been looking, and we haven't found one. So with these modifications, hopefully it gives clear direction and records its history.
Good. Discussion or action on item 10A? It's a resolution?
I'll introduce the resolution. Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Mayor Ruane?
Aye.
And item 10B, appoint citizens, point citizens to bicycle and pedestrian advisory committees, citizens crime prevention committee, community preparedness committee, culture and arts committee, parks and recreation commission, and personnel board. Just for clarification, this is the, the confirmation of the existing members that want to stay on the boards, commissions, committees going forward, and it's not, we're not this evening going to point new, new members. Is that correct, city clerk?
Correct.
Thank you.
Through, through the chair, and this is a reappointment for, for your terms? For everyone?
Yes.
Okay.
For half, for everyone that was, terms were up.
Yes.
Okay. Discussion or action?
Through the chair, I, can we just do this in one?
Motion.
One motion to, to reappoint all of the existing members of these listed committees and commissions.
Second.
Motion to second. On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed? Okay. Now we will get on to a public hearing, item number eight. We're going to hold the public hearing and take the following actions to approve the Plaza project, a mixed-use project of 406, 418, San Mateo Avenue and associated environmental determinations. Before we get into it, I'd like the city attorney to tell us some stuff here.
Well, that's, that's an open invitation.
Right.
But fortunately, I'll keep it just to the item at hand. Some of the decisions on this particular agenda item require council members to disclose what are called ex-party communications, and those are communications that you've had with other people about the project. So this is a routine, it's required by state law, the planning commissioners do it all the time, because they make these kinds of decisions relating to projects. And so now would be the time for each of you to disclose what, if any, communications you've had with, with other members of the public about the, about the project. And then, once that occurs, then you can move into the actual discussion of the item.
Okay, I'll start. I have had communications with the applicant, because I'm on the subcommittee that was reviewing this, so I've had a number of discussions with them through City Hall.
I, I'm also on the subcommittee and had the same discussions and meetings with the applicant.
And I, I, while not on the subcommittee, I have had two meetings with the applicants for interest in the architectural details. And that's good.
I'm going to sound boring. I'm not on the subcommittee, and I have had no interaction or discussion with the applicant or developer. I did sit in the planning commission when it, in the audience, and did not speak as it was brought forward to the commission for consideration, that obviously they approved and was brought here.
Michael, are you clean?
I'm clean. I, I did receive an email from the applicant, which I did not reply to, so that I would have nothing to disclose.
Okay. Mark, anything else?
That'll do it, thank you very much.
I, I have to recuse myself for the first four items of the six, because I own property within the area, within the area. So I will come back after that.
Check on the score. I don't want to know, we don't want to know. That's what we got. Okay, we're going to hold this public hearing. Item number one, and we'll take these individually, the first four, and then we'll bring Irene back. We won't close the public hearing, we'll just continue it. Adopt a resolution approving an amendment to the San Bruno 2009 general plan to conditionally allow ground floor residential uses on all streets in the downtown CBD central business district character area, except San Mateo Avenue. David?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I'd like to give you a brief introduction, and then also talk to you about the approach to the conduct of this meeting. First off, last year in February of 2013, after four years of effort by this community, San Bruno adopted its transit corridors plan, its San Bruno Transit Corridors Plan. This is a plan that looks at revitalizing San Bruno's downtown areas, say, along San Mateo Avenue and other connecting streets such as El Camino Real, Huntington Avenue, and San Bruno Avenue. I'm pleased to say tonight that this is the first project that has come forward for consideration within the Transit Corridors Plan area since the TCP was adopted in February of 2013. This project offers an opportunity to look at a mixed-use project near to transit that brings housing and commercial in combination to our downtown. It's at a key location, it's at the intersection of El Camino Real and San Mateo Avenue, it's an anchor location. It's an opportunity really for a catalyst project to initiate other projects within the TCP area. Tonight, as we, as we move forward with this project, associate planner Matt Newbaum is going to provide a staff presentation and talk to you about the existing conditions and other aspects of the project. As far as the overall conduct of the meeting, I would expect that Matt would provide the presentation to you, the staff presentation. You would ask questions of clarification. At that point, there would be an opportunity for the applicant signature development to provide a presentation. There would be questions of clarification of signature development. And then at that point, there would be an opportunity for the mayor to open the public hearing. Public hearing would be opened and stay open until final action is taken. The idea at that point would be that the public would be invited to comment on the project. We're dividing this into two separate actions. So as indicated by councilmember O'Connell, she'll be recusing herself from items one through four. So in Mr. Newbaum's presentation, he'll be presenting items one through four first. We'll go through full discussion of those leading to an action of council. And then, after that item, those items have been considered, then we'll continue our presentation on items five and six in the, in the agenda. And again, we would follow the same procedure, the staff presentation followed by clarification. The applicant would be invited to make a presentation, questions of clarification. The public would be invited to comment on items five and six, and then your action would be taken. The staff did receive a number of comments on this project. We received some email correspondence, and Mr. Newbaum, in his presentation, will address those questions and comments. But I'd like to give you a sense of the sorts of comments and questions that we received. We received questions regarding the noticing that was done for this project and the level of public outreach. We also were asked about what the consultant that we employed for this project, the design consultant we employed for this project, what were his recommendations and were they followed? We also had questions regarding the parking requirements. We had a parking study done, question having to do with the extent of area and streets that were considered in this parking study. We also had questions regarding the neighborhood meeting that was held for this project and how many people attended. There was a question about how typical is it that there are amendments to, say, the specific plan and the general plan for a project like this, given the fact that we just recently adopted the Transit Corridors Plan? And I should point out that it's, it's very typical that this sort of thing occurs. A document like a specific plan or general plan evolves and is amended over time to reflect the community's interests and needs. So at this point in time, as we look at refinement of a document like this, it would be fairly typical to expect that there would be requests for consideration of amendments. That's very standard, very typical with documents like this. I think that those are some of the key questions that came up. We also did receive an email late today from an individual indicating some support for the project, and Mr. Newbaum, I believe, has provided a copy of that email correspondence to our city clerk, which I believe has been forwarded on to council members. With that, I would ask that Mr. Newbaum stand up and provide the presentation, the staff presentation, and we would be happy to respond to any of your questions. Thank you.
Matt, is it your intention to address all four of these items now?
Correct, yes.
Okay, then let me go through them. I read the first one. The second one is adopt a resolution approving an amendment to the San Bruno Transit Corridors Plan to conditionally allow ground floor residential uses on all streets in the downtown CBD character, except San Mateo Avenue. Number three is waive the first reading and introduce an ordinance amendment, chapter 12.96.120 of Title 12 Land Use of the San Bruno Municipal Code to conditionally allow ground floor residential uses on all streets in the downtown CBD zoning district, except San Mateo Avenue, and to ensure density requirements and setback requirements are consistent with the San Bruno Transit Corridors Plan. And lastly, number four, adopt a resolution approving a conditional use permit to allow ground floor residential uses and a parking exception to allow the proposed development with the number of units and parking spaces currently proposed.
Thank you, and good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Matt Newbaum. I'm an associate planner with the Community Development Department. The item before the council tonight is the proposed mixed-use development known as the Plaza, and it's located at 406, 418, San Mateo Avenue. The project includes a three-story mixed-use development containing both a commercial and residential component. Total of 83 residential units are proposed, and the unit breakdown on that would be two studio units, 43 one-bedroom units, 32-bedroom units, and eight three-bedroom units. 6,975 square feet of commercial space is also proposed that would front San Mateo Avenue. Additionally, a subgrade garage containing 106 parking spaces is also proposed. Access to the subgrade garage would be achieved via Mastic Avenue. The site is located at the southern entrance to downtown San Bruno on the corner of San Mateo and Taylor Avenue. Commercial businesses are located to the north of the subject site, and residential uses are located to the east and south. The site is .95 acres, and the project site consists of four lots. The largest lot is developed with the former cinema theater building. The three smaller sites are developed with vacant buildings. As you can see from the photos included within the PowerPoint presentation, the buildings are in a significant state of disrepair and really present a poor image as a gateway to downtown San Bruno. The site has been in attractive for nuisances, including illegal dumping and graffiti over the years. The existing structures would be demolished as a result of this project. I would like to point out that the, the project is located at the southern entrance to downtown, and the site has a general plan designation of transit-oriented development. The site is also located within the Transit Corridor Plan area. Within the Transit Corridor Plan area, there are five different character areas, and this site is located within the CBD or Central Business District character area. Additionally, the zoning designation for the property is CBD Central Business District. There are a number of approvals being requested tonight. Of those, there's an amendment to the general plan, Transit Corridors Plan, zoning code, as well as a conditional use permit and parking exception. The current general plan, Transit Corridor Plan, and zoning code all require that residential uses be located on the upper stories of buildings. As proposed, the project contains 83 residential units, of which 21 of those residential units would be located on the ground floor level. Therefore, staff is recommending that the general plan, Transit Corridor Plan, and the zoning code be amended to conditionally allow residential units on the ground floor level, subject to obtaining a conditional use permit. And as the Community Development Director indicated, it is typical to amend policy documents such as the general plan and Transit Corridor Plan to essentially address community interests. In this particular case, the CBD character area includes several feeder streets where it may be appropriate to consider residential uses on the ground floor level, subject to obtaining that conditional use permit. The conditional use permit process would allow for residential uses within the downtown to be reviewed on a case-by-case basis. The overall intent of the conditional use permit process is to evaluate, to evaluate the proposed project in relation to its surrounding environment and to ensure that it will be consistent with and complement existing land uses. Typically, in a downtown environment, it's best to have active uses on your main street, in this case, the main street is San Mateo Avenue. As proposed, there's 6,975 square feet of retail space along San Mateo Avenue. The project also includes residential units on the ground floor level, fronting Taylor Avenue and Mastic Avenue. Staff finds that the residential units will help blend the project with the surrounding residential environment. I'd also like to point out that the zoning code would be amended to ensure all setbacks and density requirements are consistent with the Transit Corridors Plan. In regards to parking, a subgrade parking structure containing 106 parking spaces is proposed. The garage would provide parking for the residential component of the project. However, retail customers would not be able to access this garage, it's a security garage. It's important to note that the Transit Corridor Plan provides a baseline for parking standard guidelines, which will provide the framework for the parking component during the comprehensive zoning code update. Based on the parking standard guidelines within the TCP, a total of 83 to 121 parking spaces would be required for the residential component, so there's a range there. As proposed, the project fits within this range, as 106 parking spaces are provided. The Transit Corridor Plan parking standards were thoughtfully developed during the development of the TCP, which involved experts and community members, and are consistent with current parking and planning practices. In general, households within mixed-use development environments near transit stations essentially don't require as many parking spaces, because they're not as reliant on the automobile, more so they're reliant on public transportation. In this particular instance, the site is In this particular instance, the site is adjacent to existing bus routes, as well as the Caltrain station and the BART station. I'd also like to point out that the applicant is proposing transportation demand management measures. This is known as TDM for short. The intent of a TDM program is to reduce the number of vehicle trips to and from the project site, which would also help reduce the overall demand for parking. I'll just go into some of the details regarding the proposed TDM measures. They are proposing to provide secure, long-term bicycle parking. Specifically, fifty-four bicycle parking spaces would be located within the garage and on the ground floor level. Short-term bicycle parking would be provided within the public right-of-way along San Mateo Avenue, and there would be enough for ten spaces there. Additionally, transit subsidies would be distributed to residents and employees. Specifically, residents and employees would be distributed a Clipper card that is preloaded with fifty dollars. Transportation information would also be distributed to employees and residents, as well as an onsite rideshare program would be provided onsite. I'd also like to point out that staff did consult with a local transportation firm to conduct a detailed parking study. As indicated, the project does not provide parking for the retail customers. The study included all downtown parking lots, and there's a total of eight downtown parking lots, plus the surrounding residential streets. There's approximately, or actually there is twenty-one residential street segments that were included within this survey, and they're bounded by Sylvan Avenue to the north, Chapman and Georgia Avenue to the south, Linden Avenue to the west, and Milton Avenue to the east. The parking counts were conducted on Saturday, June 7th, and Tuesday, June 10th. All the counts were conducted on the same times on both days, 12:30 PM, 7:30 PM, and 1 AM. When you combine the entire parking study area, the occupancy rate falls between fifty percent and sixty-nine percent, which is less than the eighty-five percent threshold that staff considers when determining if an area is parking impacted. The entire parking study is included as Attachment 16 within the City Council staff report. I'd also like to point out that a, technically, a parking exception is required for this project, as the project is subject to the parking regulations found within the current San Bruno Municipal Code. It's important to note that the San Bruno Municipal Code is not consistent with the parking guidelines within the TCP. Based on the San Bruno Municipal Code requirements, a hundred and seventy-four parking spaces would be required for the residential component of the project. The San Bruno Municipal Code standards are outdated and are based on national guidelines that are typically based on suburban locations that really don't take into consideration proximity to local transit. It's also worth noting that the former uses on the site, which included about twenty-three thousand square feet of commercial space in the former theater building and the three adjacent restaurants to the north, required a total of a hundred and thirty-one parking spaces per the San Bruno Municipal Code standards. However, only thirty-four parking spaces were provided onsite, leaving a deficit of ninety-seven parking spaces. In terms of neighborhood outreach, the applicant did hold a neighborhood meeting on July 9th, 2014, at the DeCima Ala Elementary School multipurpose room. Ten, ten members of the public were present at that meeting. There's a very positive initial reaction to the project, and various questions came up in terms of hours of construction, ownership versus rental units, general rental rates. There was also some members of the public who expressed concern with parking. However, the neighborhood consensus was that the project would improve a section of downtown that has been vacant and underutilized for many years. In addition, the neighborhood has been informed about the project through a total of four mailed notices, and you can see from the graphic up there, the project site is located at the very bottom, and there's a six-hundred-foot radius around the project site. This is in excess of the required three-hundred-foot state notification requirement. In addition, property owners within three hundred feet of the CBD character area were notified before the Planning Commission and City Council meeting, and that is also referenced within the graphic in the PowerPoint presentation. With that, staff recommends that the City Council approve the associated resolutions to amend the general plan, Transit Corridor Plan, and zoning code, as well as to approve the conditional use permit request and parking exception request. This concludes the first portion of our staff presentation tonight, and I'd be happy to answer any clarifying questions that you have. Thank you.
Any questions for Matt at this time? Ken?
Well, initially, I just wanted to make it clear, why is the City Council approving or approving or reviewing this project and not, and not just the Planning Commission?
And, and that's a great question. The project did go through the architectural review process, the Planning Commission process, and City Council action is required due to the proposed amendments to the general plan, Transit Corridor Plan, and zoning code.
So, the follow-up to my question is, why, why would the City Council be even reviewing five and six?
Well, it's typical of staff to include the entitlements in a bulk project, in, in bulk style, so we take the entire project forward to the approval body and not break it up.
All right. Any other questions of staff at this time?
Through the chair.
Michael?
So, my question is, the Transit Corridor Plan is a fairly recent construction, and it didn't take into account the possibility of, of some, sometime in the future, having ground floor units, and I'm wondering why that wasn't initially accounted for in the Transit Corridor Plan?
Councilmember, I'd be happy to respond to that. I think that the next step, or one of the next steps to implement the Transit Corridors Plan is to update the zoning code, which is underway currently. As the city would update the zoning code, the, the city would look more carefully and do refinement to the Transit Corridors Plan. As staff has been working with the update to the zoning code, one of the areas that we've looked at is something that Mr. Newbaumers mentioned in his presentation. As we look at blending uses at ground floor, say for example, in this case, where on Mastic there are residential uses, and on some of the feeder streets to San Mateo Avenue, it could make sense to have, say, residential uses on feeder streets on ground floor and focus commercial, commercial opportunities to our main downtown street. With that sort of refinement, updating the zoning code, we would oftentimes look at then coming back and doing amendments to the Transit Corridors Plan or a specific plan like this, to then put in place that refinement and to make sure that that refinement is consistent between the zoning code and the Transit Corridors Plan. Because we have not finished the zoning code update, and this project has come before us, there are a number of things that we're looking at and actually bringing to you for consideration for amendment. So, for example, the parking requirement. The Transit Corridors parking requirement has not yet been implemented in terms of the zoning code update, so one of the actions before you tonight is to consider amending the zoning code to make sure that the parking standard of the TCP is consistent with the zoning code. So, this sort of back-and-forth refinement, as you take a higher-level document like a Transit Corridors Plan specific plan and bring it into the zoning code, a more nuts-and-bolts implementation document, is very typical, very standard.
So, you mentioned the parking, and the way I read this, we are granting an exemption to the parking rather than amending the, the codes to, to accommodate the parking. So, it sounded like you just said that we're changing, we're changing the, the code to meet the, the corridor plans guideline versus what's in the, in the municipal code. So, are we making an exemption to the municipal code, or are we, are we changing the municipal code?
In the case of the parking exception, we have not completed the zoning code update. We're still working with the current zoning code. So, the action before you on parking is to look at the current zoning code and do an exception. So, that's an exception, working with the current zoning code. So, we haven't completed the zoning code update. But with respect to ground floor residential uses, we don't have that opportunity. We have to come before you and say, in this case, our suggestion, in terms of blending residential on ground floor to Mastic and Taylor, we need to look for an amendment to the zoning code in that case, in that particular case. We don't have the availability of an exemption, or I'm sorry, an exception.
Okay. And just in general, we're, we're still making, we're taking a hard line on no residential on the first floor on San Mateo Avenue, and why do we want to take that position?
We want to take that position because San Mateo Avenue is our downtown commercial street, and we feel strongly that that's the area where we should focus, primarily focus our commercial activities. And in other areas, like a backstreet like Mastic, which faces residential, there'd be an opportunity there to consider on a case-by-case basis with a conditional use permit, perhaps residential there. But the core street, the downtown core street, that's where we should focus our commercial activities. And so, we're not recommending that you consider non-commercial uses there. Keep that commercial.
Even if, if the situation were that we're in dire shortage of, of housing and not necessarily people beating down our doors to open small retail stores, we're, we're still going to be locked into that position where that's what we, what we, what we want to have, but not necessarily what the economy would, would push for.
I wouldn't say it that way. I would say at this point in time, we, we see that the downtown street, San Mateo Avenue, is best used for commercial. If some point in the future, we would determine that we have a circumstance like you described, councilmember, then there is the opportunity to serve community interest to consider amending the code. But at this time, we're suggesting that there is opportunity to focus our commercial activities on San Mateo Avenue, and we're not recommending at this time that you would consider allowing residential uses there. It could be, at some point in the future, community interest suggests going a different direction, but not at this time, is our recommendation.
Okay. And then, more specifically, I saw in some of the documents that we were striking out references to, to density. We're removing, I believe it was in the, in the municipal code, we took out the, the part where density was referenced, and then there's another one where we're adding a line that specifically says, there are no density requirements. I spent some time looking through the Transit Corridor Plan, and it's a huge document, and I may have missed it, but I didn't see anything in there that had a specific maximum density for, for the area. Is, is that in there somewhere, or?
The, the Transit Corridors Plan addresses density in this way. In the TCP area overall, the environmental document and approach is that up to sixteen hundred and ten residential units would be allowed in the area, and it's required that the city monitor the number of units that are added to the area over time. So, there is not a specific density limit per parcel or property, but there is an overall maximum capacity of sixteen hundred and ten units. That's why you see density struck, because of that approach.
So, we're taking it in whole for the entire area?
That's right. We're looking at the entire area and looking at development proposals on a case-by-case basis, and evaluating what makes most sense in terms of proximity to transit and the overall mix of land uses, in terms of, say, office, residential services, and retail. So, the approach is to look at an overall density limit of sixteen hundred and ten units, not on a case-by-case basis or a property-by-property basis.
So, it makes it difficult for, for a person to know how dense we're, we're going to get. I mean, we're, it's, it's kind of conceptual, this larger idea, but I mean, is there some translation that you could do in terms of the maximum number of units that, that you could fit, and how many people that would be, I mean?
The, the translation is, you know, an average throughout the TCP area of about twenty-two units per acre. That's a translation, that's one way to look at it. But again, our focus would be to, to try to mix housing with other land uses in the most appropriate locations. But overall, the average would be about twenty-two units per acre through the TCP area. That's one way to look at it. And again, it will require that we monitor the overall number of units allowed over time on a parcel-by-parcel basis.
And how does that, the, the number I saw in here, I believe, was one unit per one thousand square feet?
In, in this case, there are eighty-three units being proposed. It's about one acre of property.
Okay.
In this particular case. Now, keep in mind, this is at a gateway location. It's an opportunity to bring people to our downtown, people who would potentially use our shops and restaurants, very close to transit, Caltrain, BART, and, and a bus line that would take people to BART six hundred feet away. So, at this point, we're really looking at an opportunity to kind of energize the downtown with population, with people. The overall TCP area, as you know, allows for a full, broad range of uses, from office to residential, to services, to retail. But with this initial project, we're looking at eighty-three residential units.
So, could I interpret what you just said to mean that this is on the, on the denser side of what we would see in, in the overall development?
Absolutely. This is very much on the denser side in terms of residential units that we would see within the project area. Again, we're looking at an overall average density of about twenty-two units per acre. In some cases, for example, in the transit station area, as you know, because of the noise limitations, because of airport use, we can't have any additional residential units in that area at all. So, a whole area of the TCP area would be precluded from having residential units. Okay. Thank you.
Anything else for staff at this time? Rico?
Real quick, I just wanted to clarify, as I said at the commission meeting, there were some things, and some things may have been modified a little bit.
Yes.
Between that and here. And again, I just sat and listened and then left quickly, but just to clarify, I know there was discussion about the gym being on the ground floor on the street. The then, the applicant did say it was about bringing activity and light and stuff like that. My understanding is now that has been moved from the street further in? Just I want that cleared up, because I, obviously, the commission was said one way, and so now, I just want that clear.
And, and you're correct. At the commission, what was proposed is a fitness room on ground floor on San Mateo Avenue, and that fitness room, that gym use, has been relocated since the Planning Commission hearing from first floor San Mateo Avenue to second floor, and in its place would be the opportunity for a commercial use. Staff supports that. It really provides an opportunity for the majority, nearly all of the San Mateo Avenue frontage to be commercial, to provide the opportunity in that horizontal width for a range of different tenants. So, that, that space, which Matt had indicated to be about sixty-nine hundred square feet of commercial space, could be divided in a variety of ways, depending on the, the type of tenant or number of tenants being proposed on ground floor. At this time, the vision is, is certainly to energize San Mateo Avenue with retail and commercial uses, restaurants, and create a very active, dynamic streetscape. So, we're very supportive of that shift.
And, and thank you, and, and so am I. That was one thing I had that I thought, okay, let's hold off for a couple of weeks because it'll, it'll be up here. But I appreciate that, and also, there's the interior hallway for the commercial, which I think was important, so I'm glad to see that that's there. You somewhat, and again, I wasn't on the subcommittee, I didn't speak to the applicant. I'm just always, my concerns are always as far as lighting, as far as aesthetics, as far as graffiti abatement, as far as those type of concerns that affect the, the community on a day-to-day basis. Could you address any of those items as far as?
I think in, in terms of?
And I know there's a lot, but I'm bringing it forward here so that it's reaffirmed.
Sure. You know, in terms of what we have there today, I'll start with what we have there today. We have a complex of buildings. We have the, the old cinema building, and we have three other commercial buildings formerly used as bars that are, that are vacant, that have been vacant for approximately ten years. We, on a regular basis, get phone calls regarding graffiti abatement on those properties. On a regular basis, we get phone calls regarding people going into those structures, vandalizing, breaking into those structures, going within them, spending time within them, and there's a need for our police department, our code enforcement staff, to And there's a need for our police department, our code enforcement staff, to follow up on those calls. So, that's what we've been dealing with. With the proposed project, all of those buildings would be demolished and removed and the project that we are describing to you tonight would be placed in that area. It's anticipated that the project could, if approved, would go forward and the demolition could occur as soon as, say, next summer sometime with construction to begin thereafter and the building to be completed sometime early 2017. The aesthetics, in the second part of this presentation tonight, we'll get into more discussion about the architecture, the colors, the materials, and the aesthetics of the proposed project.
Thank you.
Anything else? See, the applicant is here. Would you like to address the council before we open the public hearing?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Appreciate it very much to have the honor and opportunity to present tonight. It's been a great process and we're happy to be here and hopefully, we will perform for you. My name's Tom Qualia. I'm a partner and project manager of Signature Development Group. It's a 40-plus-year privately-held development company, family-owned. We actually are owners as well as employees. We have a long history of infill development, including mixed use in all of the surrounding areas, including San Francisco and Oakland and down in the South Bay. We just finished up in San Francisco. We just started a mixed-use project in downtown Oakland and are excited to be here for this great site. Before we even started working with staff, one of the huge challenges was to gain control of this property. Very, very complicated ownership situation, very fragmented. And myself personally, I spent a year and a half, if you will, chasing the control of the site. And quite frankly, we got lucky. We were able to gain control of the property to allow us to start the process. What this conclusion here is tonight, hopefully, is really what the planning committee, one of the planning commissioners said. Really, the project and proposal that's before you tonight is the evidence of all the work that was done on the TCP for a couple of years by both your council, your planning commission, and your community groups. This proposal translates the TCP to actually boots-on-the-ground. And in answer to the council members' questions, the TCP is a specific plan. It will be and it is a living and breathing document. And it continues to have to be a living and breathing document with push and pull, especially for developers and planners, because the area in downtown San Bruno is very fragmented. It's very, very difficult to assemble properties and then be able to take a rigid document and apply it in all cases. So, I commend the explanation of how staff presented it today because it really needs a push-me, pull-me. We are, we have actually met with staff on other occasions on other properties and it's difficult. We're grinding away trying to get more opportunities here, but having that flexibility and understanding the document is very important. This was a collaborative effort. We started with the subcommittee of the TCP. We then moved on to numerous meetings at ARC and then on to the planning commission, parking council. And all along the way, we had input from many people, the designs consultant as well as staff represented in this. And then, even since the planning commission has duly noted, we made more refinements, if you will, and we'll get into those a little bit more. But the relocation of the rec area upstairs, the enhancement of the retail along the ground floor, the creation of the corridor, all these things was the work of the village, if you will, coming together with this plan before you. The project will transform, as you guys know, dilapidated buildings and it'll do two things. It'll take great advantage of a really good transit site. We do transit-oriented development. This is a poster child. So, that's one of the really good things that can happen on. The second is, it'll help, hopefully, vitalize downtown and kind of start to add to the momentum that is there now. I don't live here, so I, you know, the history, I kind of grew up in South City and down in Mountain View, but anytime you have investment in downtown, it's got to be a good thing. And from a planning principle standpoint, bringing beds and disposable incomes to downtown is also a very, very good thing. So, it takes advantage of a great transit site. It takes advantage of a really, really good document in the TCP and it asks for, you know, some massaging of that as we go along. Signature Development Group, we take this very seriously. We're interested in this project, but we're interested in the next one and the next one. You can go and touch and feel of our projects. We took it very seriously here as we worked through this process. We used very good architects that had experience here from the project before, used a really good landscape architect, and feel that we have a very comprehensive plan with you for your consideration. Based on all of this, Signature Development's ready to make a $35 to $40 million investment in downtown with the improvements for this particular building. We don't take that lightly, obviously. It's our money. We're a private company. So, we appreciate that. I wanted to just clarify one thing that, oh, the ground floor units on Mastic and Taylor are structurally on the ground, but they're slightly elevated just because of the grade change and there are no front doors out there. So, the idea, though, was you don't have active coming and going and all that type of stuff to impact those two residential streets adjacent to us. The other thing I wanted to point out was the TDM measures and the graffiti. It's a rental building. We own the building, we manage the building. So, it would be like us owning our own house, if you will. So, if in fact there is graffiti, there's onsite management that immediately takes care of it. That's a little different than maybe a condo project, if you will, or something a little different that way because then you've got 83 individual owners and they, okay, now we got to get the board together to say, okay, do we spend these money? So, this is onsite management. It's owned by the developers and it's managed, so going forward. So, I would like to ask for your support. I appreciate the opportunity. I'd like to make myself available to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
Through the chair. With your experience and especially with mixed use and infill sites, can you explain your confidence in the parking that you're providing and how, you know, and how that will transition and affect the surrounding area?
Well, there's a couple of things that happen. One is, it's a rental project and they're small units. More than half of these units are either a studio or one-bedroom and then about 45% of them are two-bedrooms, give or take. The TCP plan requires a range of 83 approximately parking stalls to 120, where 106 were at the higher end. So, you could, if you compared it to 83, say, we've got 20-some-odd extra, if you will, and you could reverse that. The beauty is, you have walking distance to major, major, major transit and that's a huge plus. We have done many, many projects at a one-to-one parking. In Oakland, they've asked us to do project with no parking because they want to force transit. Obviously, we're at 1.3 stalls per project. So, we feel that given the unit size, the rental mix, and this absolutely supreme location right next to a transit, large transit node, that we're overparked with regards to the residents. And then, secondarily, with regards to the retail, obviously, we're replacing retail. Staff at their independence did extensive studies and obviously, we looked at those. There's substantial amount of parking in the area and hopefully, the retail will be successful. Obviously, you guys know the Main Street better than us, but we're hoping that it will be successful. I did want to point out, the retail that is being proposed is not a formal sit-down white tablecloth restaurants. These are not designed for a large kitchen, if you will, so that you've got this huge mass of people coming. It's more cafe takeaway and gathering place, a sense of place, a sense of purpose. So, very much complementary to the rest of Main Street there. So, we're very confident that the parking will work and quite frankly, the next generation is not even asking for parking stalls. Our projects in San Francisco, they've unbundled them to where outside people can rent the stalls because they just sit there vacant.
Anything else? Rico?
Real quick, just as far as if this should pass the council this evening, as far as construction is concerned and labor and prevailing wage, how are you on that?
Well, prevailing wage, you know, we're not involved in that on this site. It relates to labor. We've built and all of these communities have a great relationship with the labor unions. You can check our history, our record, and we sit down with all of them as we get ready to start a project. Obviously, we have big concrete work, you know, that goes without saying, and then we'll cascade from there.
Thank you.
Any questions? All right, this time, I'd like to open up the public hearing with the members of the public elect to address this on these items. Just tell us your name and your street, please.
Robert Rico, Seventh Avenue. I have a couple of questions. I've got too many and I'm not going to ask them all. I heard what David said about constantly changing our, the ability to constantly change the TCP conditions. I'm just, I'm not happy with the way that's going. I'm really concerned about parking and how far away is the bus stop, north and south? Do you have to walk all the way up to El Camino or farther to be able to get the bus if you wanted to use that for transit or transportation? How far is the train station to the tenants that may move in and live there? Are they going to have to walk to the train station or are they going to have to walk to BART if they, if we're trying to cut down on giving them parking spaces? One of the earlier proposals that fell through for that site did propose to put some parking, parallel parking on Mastic. This apparently does not show any on-street parking on Mastic or on Taylor. One of the earlier proposals also talked about having some interior parking spots that would be available to the public without having additional on-street parking or off-street parking. I don't think people are going to walk very far to get there. I'm not going to park a block or two away in one of the existing parking lots and walk all the way. So, I think the parking and how to utilize, how close the public transportation is is a concern that needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Jamie Monazan, 3150 Crestmore Drive. I also work downtown at the Chamber of Commerce and I see a lot of people walking to and from the transit area. I would like to thank Tom for the, his presentation today. I think it looks absolutely beautiful. For the 27 years I've lived here, it's always been a question to me, why is downtown look the way it does? Why isn't it being improved? When I speak to the business owners on San Mateo Avenue and I talk about the potential of new buildings and the excitement of new residents coming in, many of them say, you know, that's a long story. We've been hearing that for many, many, many years. At this point, and it's no criticism to anyone here, but at this point, it looks like we're ready to go and I'd hate to see anything get in the way. It looks to me as if staff has done an excellent job. All of the proper research has been done. We know what the standards are. We've exceeded what the standards are and I think it's time to just get moving. And I'm excited to see what's on the horizon for San Bruno, especially for downtown. And many people are using bikes now. They're walking. They're trying to be healthier and that is the next generation. My daughter is a high schooler. She likes to walk even to Tamperan and we live way up in the hill because she wants to exercise. So, that's what I'd like to see happen and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Marty Medina, Garden Avenue. I received Centennial information this week and I quote from the message from the mayor and the city council that San Bruno is known as the city with a heart. With that in mind, I'm asking you, just for a little bit, to lose sight of the revenue, next week's election, and everything else, and concentrate just for a little bit on the people that live right next door, one street over, detailed in the attachment 16 in your packet. Because in our neighborhood, we already have a parking problem. Our neighborhood has numerous apartments along with single-family homes. But it's something we've grown accustomed to where sometimes you have to kind of block the sidewalk a little bit to get your car pulled up. Sometimes you may even have to block your own driveway so you can fit in and get close to your house, which obviously, something that everybody wants. The parking count shown in your attachment verifies the existing condition. In this parking survey, I quote, "Parking is considered at capacity at 85%." Well, Milton Avenue currently has 91%. Garden has 92%. San Anselmo has 93%. And Florida Avenue, and I believe it was 42 parking spaces, has 100%. So, right now, if you just take one car from anywhere to go in there from a new development, where's that person going to park? But this, we talked about the numbers already. Normally, this would require almost 200 parking spaces because what everybody's talked about, they don't include the commercial. It was all units. And this is the commercial property, 7,000 square feet. Where are the workers going to park? Yeah, maybe they're going to take transit, maybe they're not. Where are the customers going to park? So, the study mentioned the overall parking area in downtown and that's 1,000 feet away. The most northern, largest lots that we have are far away. So, where are these people? How are they going to get to where they want to go? Well, you know what the answer is. They're going to go right over to the other side of the street and take somebody's parking space and it's everybody's parking space, right? But that's going to bump somebody over. It's going to bump somebody over. And we already, as shown in your own survey, it's already at 190%. So, I know this timer's going off, but you can just give me a little bit more time. I definitely would appreciate it, okay?
We have a long agenda to wrap up very quickly.
I understand. This is a very important project to everybody, but I'm asking you just to think about that. How's that going to affect us that live already there? It's great, you know, it's a great project, but at the very minimum, there's still a chance to get a win-win here, right? Because that's what we should try, you should be trying to do for us, to protect us that currently live here, not the new business, not the new residents, but the people that are already here. So, I strongly disagree with the council's detailed findings for approval. This project will create a hardship for the current residents, but still, we can do win-win. We should have a parking permit program within the area that was shown up there earlier, all these impacted streets between the hours of, I don't know, nine to six, nine to seven, whatever it'd be. Figure it out, okay? Hire another consultant to figure that out for us.
I'm asking you to wrap it up.
Okay. So, please remember the current residents. Put yourself in our position. Place the quality of their life higher than a developer's profit. Please, prove that San Bruno really is the city with the heart because it is not just a motto, it is a way of life and a way of consciousness.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, Russ Eins, Reed Avenue. I'd just like to say that it is true that we do need to think about why we are doing what we're doing up there. It is about the residents. I know you guys all went up there when you got appointed and you got your positions and you thought, what could I do? It was to protect the people of San Bruno and to keep some amount of urban living here. I particularly like urban living and I know I don't live up on the hill. I particularly like urban living, and I know I don't live up on the hill where none of this will affect me. I do live kind of in the TCP, and it might not necessarily affect me, but my neighbors are going to get crushed by some of this, and I just find it unconscionable, and I ask you for some conscience here. Why are you up there? You're up there to help the existing residents and the existing businesses of San Bruno, and I understand we need more revenue, and I understand that, and we do need to make some exceptions, but we need to make them with a big-time conscience, and we need to really think about what we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Perry Peterson, Senate Court. I agree with the two previous speakers that thinking of how to protect the local residents is an important idea. At the same time, I think the city council and staff is well aware of that potential difficulty, and I think you're going to address it. I've lived in San Bruno for over 35 years and watched San Mateo Avenue lose roads hardware, which I'm sure many of you remember, and that was a real critical loss. That was one of the mainstay businesses on San Mateo Avenue, as I think many people who live here remember. As a contrast, this is an amazing project in many respects. This is the reversal of the damage that was done when roads left and many other businesses left. Yes, we do have some good businesses on San Mateo Avenue, but this project is amazing for so many reasons. Number one, it can start now. Number two, it has a lot of parking. And where is that parking? It's underground. Number three, this is a project that is coming forth by an experienced developer when the city needs it most and providing the benefits that you hope to get by modifying ordinance 1284. But this is coming forward to do in a major way what the TCP would like to do. It's got retail and commercial. Probably as important as anything, it's new and it's highly visible. This will make a change in San Bruno far greater than I think many people realize. I think the developer may realize it, but it's so visible. It's right smack on El Camino, even though it's on San Mateo Avenue, and it's in an area that's been essentially blighted for many years. There's, it makes use of the principles of the Transit Quarter Plan, using multiple parcels, bringing them together, so you get a bigger impact rather than separate developments. And it's, it's got such an example, as being so visible, it will be a tremendous example to future development. People will look at that and say, hey, look at that. Maybe, maybe I could develop something just down the street. That's going to draw people like crazy. And yet, it is big, and yet, it's not very big. It's only 83 units. Even if there are two people in every unit, it's not going to flood the streets with people. But what a start. And so I like to commend the developer for such amazing persistence and quick action, and the city staff for doing a hell of a job of working with them, and for the many people in the community as well as the council who've supported this. Gosh, San Bruno, it's coming back. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Mary Lou Johnson. I am a resident of San Bruno for 38 years. I've raised two children in San Bruno. I just want to give you a very brief overview as to why I'm making my comments. I, my business recently celebrated 63 years in San Bruno. I have seen over 45,000 children and over 83,000 families. And so through those families, I have actually seen and lived San Bruno in a lot of different ways. And part of that, they've owned businesses in San Bruno, they've worked in San Bruno, and they've commuted to and from San Bruno. And for a variety of reasons, some of these businesses and some of these communities' activities have had peaks and valleys, some really good celebrating components and some, some challenges. And I know that over 25 years ago, a local architect developed a charade, designed for San Mateo Avenue. It is still there, just a design, and nothing has happened. Although I completely agree and support many of the comments that were given tonight and the concerns through parking and the variety of other comments, I think that right now we are being challenged, and it's important that we recognize this is a challenge for our future, and that it is a good challenge. And San Mateo Avenue is, you know, the issues that come up are more than a quarter of a century old. That's old. I mean, that's, that's a reality, 25 years of, of just standing still. And I don't want to give you all the details of all the places I've served in San Bruno. However, it is my involvement and my love for San Bruno that I do get involved. I've served on the 75th anniversary of San Bruno. Now it's 100, you know, crime prevention for over six years, and many other, many other committees. I was really proud to be part of implementing curbside recycling when there was a huge opposition to curbside recycling, and look at, you know, where we've come from that. And I do serve on the planning commission, so I've had the opportunity to see hundreds and probably thousands of projects in my 25 years. I am speaking tonight as a citizen and not, not as a commissioner. And so I think having a vital, a plan for San Mateo Avenue is vital in its surrounding areas. It's long overdue, and there are many points of views. People are going to agree and disagree, and I think this is a time that if we can really pull our heads together to pull something out rather than keeping a plan in a box or in a project or in a drawer, this is the time to come together. We are going to have obstacles, but we need to come together, work with the developer. He's a good developer. He's solid. He knows what he's doing, and I'm proud to, to support that project. I do want to be sure that we address those issues of the, of the community. And in closing, I'd like to just say that, you know, tonight, I was really proud to, to see that there's a time capsule. 2064 is 50 years from now. I will be over 100 years old. And most everyone, maybe Ben will not be in that area, but most everyone in this room will be at least 85 years old. I mean, let's think about that in reality. And who are we building this future from if it isn't for our youngsters, our children, our community? We can't think about ourselves. You have to think about the future. We've got to do it well, and we've got to do it right. We've got to do it together. We can't take a position against another, against each other. We may not agree. We don't have to be clones in this. We don't have to be Simus twins, but we must take a position to move forward and to, to do this on behalf of our city. And our, all of our officials in the back, they won't be here, or they won't be around for all of these pieces. So we've got to think beyond, beyond the situation. And so I ask that, this 35 to $40 million project is huge. How often will we get this chance? It took a lot of effort to get this project pulled together. We've seen some vacancies. We've seen some vacancies. We've seen some horrible things and dark places, lack of use, become unsafe places. And so do we want to continue? We've got a beautiful end of San Mateo Avenue that we move forward. Do we want to see that being developed with other people making those decisions besides us making those decisions? So I'm asking you and my San Bruno community to stand behind this project and come together in a way that we can actually do it, do it well together. So thank you for listening to my comments.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Ben Cohen, Fleetwood Drive. I would just like to offer my support for this project and just note that, as some have said before, that this sets a very high bar and a very visible bar for future development. I think that's what we need to, to start off the rejuvenation of our downtown. So just another voice supporting this project and hoping that it moves forward and quickly. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, we're not going to close the public hearing because we have Irene coming back for the last two items, but we will vote individually on these four. Any council discussion at this time?
I'm, I'm anxious to speak, and I think the theme that was, that was spoken in those last few minutes has been time. And it just, as I was listening and Perry, I mean, that was very articulate, very, very passionate. I thought about 40 years ago. I was an architecture student, and we're studying about the death of, death of American cities because of, because of suburban sprawl. Now, San Bruno might not have died, but the downtown really struggled because of a regional shopping center, Tanfran. And now we've gone full circle. So fast forward a few decades, I've been, I've been sitting up here for 18 years, and so that's nearly half my life I've been trying to resurrect the downtown. And I, I can't be prouder. But I do have concerns, and I've, I've voiced my concerns in emails, and I've voiced my concerns to, to the developers about the parking, because I believe in the Transit Quarter Plan. I believe that there's a whole, that there's a new revolution on how to develop, you know, to develop the downtown, how to develop this part of the city. I'm so proud that from one end of the city to the other, we have made a difference sitting up here and through the staff and through public and private partnerships, we have, we're taking advantage of that. Yes, there's a concern about how trends are going to be and how parking is going to be, but I promise you, if, if we had stuck to the old plan, if we had stuck to the old ordinance, these applicants would be sitting here. That property would stay vacant, and we would be fending off criticism on why can't we get something done. So San Bruno has, I mean, I believe we've had this stigma for many years, being Johnny Come Lately. We were the, one of the last communities to implement redevelopment, and we took full advantage of it, and then we've lost it. And we don't have that carrot anymore, other than a burgeoning economy right now, and signature properties has come to the rescue. And they could wait. I mean, I, I disagree. I mean, there could have been a developer that can probably put 25 more units in here if they wanted to spend more money and put more parking underground, because Measure N, you know, would allow, you know, you know, four stories here. But they see the, they see the benefit. They see, like Perry said, you know, this is more than 83 units and 7,000 square feet of commercial. This is an image change for San Bruno. This is going to be seen by more than just our residents and our workers and our businesses. So I'm excited as ever. I'm proud of it, and just like what the person on the planning commission said, this is what the Transit Quarters Plan is all about. And it's been sketches, it's been diagrams, it's been thick books and things, and we're seeing it being implemented right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Rico? Michael?
Thank you. I don't think anybody disagrees with, with the vision, and I know a lot of, a lot of time and effort was spent on, on developing that vision, and we all know that downtown needs a shot in the arm. But, you know, some of the comments I'm hearing, especially from people that participated in that development, and they're concerned about the changes that we're making now. I know it's, it's, you explained, it's, it's an evolving dynamic. We're going to continue to see things. So I'm concerned about just the, that erosion of the, the bar that we're setting, and it does seem like we're going to have to continue making concessions. Now, not speaking at all to the vision and what needs to happen downtown, I know the thing, the, the item before us today is, is very specific, and it's about changing very specific things, and I don't think I'm opposed to approving what's before us, allowing the, the residential units on the ground floor. That seems reasonable, I believe. Any similar project in, in neighboring communities probably has that same, same structure. So I don't see that as something that, that, that I wouldn't support. I know that if we, if we decided not to support that, it would definitely derail this project, and, and I'm definitely excited about seeing something new downtown, something that looks this nice is definitely going to help. But it's, it's hard not to listen to those concerns that I'm hearing from my neighbors. And this, it's, it's like opening Pandora's Box to all the, all the other developments that will follow this one, and as somebody said, it's setting the bar, but it, it sets a lot of different bars. It not only sets the bar for the quality and the, you know, the aesthetics, but it also sets a bar for, for the density and for exceptions to, to parking and all those things that, that will impact our, our quality of life in the surrounding neighborhoods. I lived in San Francisco, and I think it's a completely different dynamic. I left San Francisco for a reason, for I wanted the backyard and a little more space than what I had, and yeah, I didn't need a car in San Francisco, but I, I couldn't, I couldn't do the same thing living here in San Bruno. So I wonder, when this project is completed, are the people that are moving in here going to be the type of people that don't need cars, or are they going to be people that do need cars? And it's hard to say. Who's going to come to San Bruno? I know the people in San Francisco, they still don't need cars, but I know that something that, that I've heard discussed a lot in, in our communities out here in the peninsula is how do you, how do you close that last mile of your, of your commute? And so, yeah, we're going to put people right next to a train station, but if their final destination isn't also right next to a train station or somewhere that's commuter-friendly, then they're still going to need cars. So it's really going to depend. So unless people live and work here in the city, which would be nice, I, I see that it could potentially cause a lot of problems to have that additional density. And again, not necessarily the first project, but the accumulation of projects over time. So I still, I still have concerns, but like I said before, I, I think that what's before us today is a reasonable request in allowing the exemption to the ground floor residences, and so I think I'm in favor of moving forward with that.
Thank you. Rico?
There were some concerns addressed. One is about parking permit, and I believe, staff, correct me, but there is a process to go to the Traffic Safety Parking Commission to address those issues as they did with the old train station was further down on Huntington, and there is a process and protocol in which residents or a neighborhood can come together and request that. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And also, there was a question in regards to, as far as the staff that would be on-site. Is there any type of a shuttle, or is there any type of encouragement as far as that was concerned?
And Vice Mayor, are you talking about a car share or ride share program?
Yep.
Something like that.
That, as well as the staff and where they were parking, or is there a sign?
There, there is a requirement that, as Matt indicated, that they provide a transportation demand management program on-site, and they'll need to provide clipper cards or equivalent to the tenants and also the employees in the commercial portion. There'll be 54 bike racks within the downstairs area of the garage, 10 bike racks outside and available to people in the surrounding area. There'll be a car share transit information kiosk that will be required to be maintained by the property manager of that development project. So yes, there are a number of TDM measures that are required as a condition of approval, recommended condition of approval for this project.
Thank you. I like some that's in the audience, as well as, you know, being here quite a while now in my whole life, I do remember San Mateo Avenue before the malls. I remember going to that theater. Remember the Ross for Men and the Ross for Women clothing store, one on each side of the street? Why it was on either side, I don't know, but that's how it was. The roads hardware that was mentioned, the Pet World, the Lullaby Lane, I can go down a list of what was once, and that was before Bay Hill, that was before the shops at Tanfran. I do know that that building has been vacant for quite some time. You've got it at that end, and you've got the bank at the other end. down a list of what was once, and that was before Bay Hill, that was before the shops at Tanfran. I do know that that building has been vacant for quite some time. You've got it at that end, and you've got the bank at the other end. And honestly, you need to start doing something to improve the vision, to improve the site, and the enthusiasm to bring business and people to downtown. I do know that's been boarded, and staff has gotten calls from me that says, somebody broke in. So, they have to send the police, they go through, there's been, you know, we can go on and on, but that project has sat idle. And I know, back when it was Taylor Street Bar and Grill, when there were food establishments, when there was Jack's Drugs, when the bars were established, all of that foot traffic and/or parking, certainly in those days, it wasn't about commuting, it was about driving or walking. So, I do know that there was a more vibrant time where parking may have still been at times challenged. I think we do need to be concerned, we do need to always be at the forefront of that. But I do think that you're talking about a development that will move that project, that area, and that future, together as a community, I think we need to look out for each other. And I do think that, I don't know the developer and the applicant personally, but I've heard some things, I've checked for what I can, for my resources, and I've heard that it seems sound, and that you would do right by San Bruno, because obviously, I can tell you, we'll be watching, and you would hear from us soon if anything other than a good, solid quality facility is established there. That does make a huge significance to San Bruno and its future.
All right, just a couple of quick comments. I had the pleasure of working with the, on the subcommittee with the applicant, come a long way, worked very, very hard, went through the whole planning process. I know it was mentioned that the TCP is being adjusted internally, one, Mr. Rico, I believe, said he wasn't happy about that. It is, in fact, as the staff said and the developer said, it is a live document. The only thing set in stone that I see is that hideous superstructure sitting there for ten years, with vagrants going in and out, graffiti up and down, fencing around it, and not benefiting anyone. That's the only thing that's set in stone. So, the TCP, I worked on that for a long time with an awful lot of people. It is a live document, it will be adjusted internally, as we see fit, frankly, and we've done it this time. A lot of comments made about being sensitive to the neighborhood. If this doesn't pass, we are being totally insensitive to the neighborhood, to let that monstrosity sit there any longer than it has to. People have talked to me and this council for many years about, why can't you bring business in? Well, you can only bring business into this city if you make it attractive for them to come to this city. And we've had some very wonderful opportunities with great business owners. Jack's Restaurant came to us and said, I want to do this, whereas we got shot down with a number of other people. The developer came to us and said, hey, I have an idea, and what can we do? And I'm really going out on a limb to try to get some overpriced three bars to make this a bigger type of investment for us and a bigger and better structure for you and livable working space. So, they went out on a limb, and I think it's wonderful that tonight, hopefully, listening to the other comments, we're going to support them. It's, as Mr. Peterson said, wow, this is great. I too remember all of the stores in San Mateo Avenue in San Bruno, and it's good to have some of those things back. I don't know if you've seen the article, and it was a whole number of pages in Last Sunday's Chronicle about South San Francisco, and what's happening on Grand Avenue, and all the different stores and things that are starting to bubble up there. We worked very hard as a council and made some very big strides to try to work with Caltrain to get a great separation on the fifth worst, dangerous, most dangerous crossing in the state of California. We're very, very hard to get that. Council before us weren't working with them, and look what we have now, all right? That's an anchor in the north part of our town, and this development will be an anchor in the south part of our town. And I look forward to those two anchors working right towards the middle. So, I think it's a very, very good development, and it will benefit all of us. With that, we have four items here to vote on before we ask Mrs. O'Connell to come back in. The first one is to adopt a resolution approving an amendment to the San Bruno 2009 general plan to conditionally allow ground floor residential uses on all streets in the downtown CBD character area except San Mateo Avenue. Would someone like to introduce that resolution?
I'll introduce.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. Item number two, we're asking to adopt a resolution approving an amendment to the San Bruno Transit Corridors Plan to conditionally allow ground floor residential uses on all streets in the downtown CBD character area except San Mateo Avenue.
Through the chair, can I ask one final question on these? Because we're conditionally allowing it, that condition, can somebody speak to what approvals would be required for that condition? Is that something that the Planning Commission is going to approve, or is that something that comes to the council?
In this particular case, this is coming to you for this particular project. Henceforth, though, unless the project would come to you because it's bundled with entitlements, policy decisions, the Planning Commission would take a final action. So, if there's a legislative action involved in the entitlements going forward, the whole package would come to you. If it's a standalone conditional use permit, final action would be by the Planning Commission.
The Planning Commission. Thank you.
Someone like to introduce the second resolution?
Through the chair, I'll introduce.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. Item number three is waive the first reading and introduce an ordinance amendment, chapter twelve point nine six point one two zero of Title XII Land Use of the San Bruno Municipal Code to conditionally allow ground floor residential uses on all streets in the downtown CBD zoning district except San Mateo Avenue, and to ensure density requirements and setback requirements are consistent with the San Bruno Transit Corridors Plan.
Through the chair, I'd like to make a motion to waive the first reading.
Second.
This motion is second to waive the first reading on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed.
And I'd like to introduce the ordinance.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. And item number four, adopt a resolution approving a conditional use permit to allow ground floor residential uses and a parking exception to allow the proposed development with the number of units and parking spaces currently proposed.
Through the chair, I'd like to introduce the resolution.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
I'd now like to ask Councilmember O'Connell to come back in, please, to can address items five and six.
Item number five is adopt a resolution approving installation of two loading zone spaces adjacent to the project site along San Mateo Avenue. And item number six is adopt a resolution approving an architectural review permit for the Plaza, a mixed-use project at four oh six, four eighteen, San Mateo Avenue.
Thank you. As stated, an architectural review permit is also required for this proposed project. I'll give a very brief presentation on the overall project evolution. Staff worked very closely with the applicant on a preliminary basis regarding the architectural appearance of the structure. Plans were first submitted to staff in January of two thousand fourteen and were reviewed by Larry Cannon, the city's architectural peer review consultant. The initial direction from the city and Mr. Cannon was to modify the design to be more consistent with the two thousand nine approval and to be consistent with the TCP design guidelines. The project was reviewed by the Architectural Review Committee and Planning Commission. The Planning Commission adopted all resolutions recommending that the city council approve the project as proposed. Since the Planning Commission meeting, the applicant has further refined the proposal by incorporating additional architectural elements. Those elements include a more defined corner element, recessing windows, incorporating additional awnings, and by including a raised roof for the corner element. Staff is in favor of these changes. We find that the additional architectural components further enhance the architectural appearance of the structure, and we do find that those changes are consistent with the TCP design guidelines. Additionally, as the Community Development Director noted, the applicant has relocated the fitness room to the second floor level and incorporated an internal hallway connecting all but one of the commercial spaces to the dedicated commercial trash room located on the northern edge of the property. And this was consistent with staff's previous recommendations. By relocating the fitness room, a new commercial space was created along San Mateo Avenue, which would further activate pedestrian activity and contribute to an overall and more active downtown environment. There was a question from a member of the public regarding what recommendations were not implemented, and when the project was first submitted, staff and Larry Cannon, the city's peer review architect, had a recommendation to increase the retail depth. And the thought behind this recommendation was to, was that deeper retail depths would appeal to a broader range of potential commercial tenants. However, by relocating the fitness room, an additional commercial space has been created along San Mateo Avenue. Staff finds that there is sufficient space, sufficient retail space, as proposed, that could be divided in a way that would appeal to a broader range of potential tenants. You'll also notice that there is a resolution before the city council tonight regarding two loading zone spaces adjacent to the project site along San Mateo Avenue. Staff recommended that the applicant incorporate two loading zone spaces to accommodate deliveries for the commercial businesses as well as residents when moving into and out of the complex. The Traffic Safety and Parking Committee reviewed this request at the September third, two thousand fourteen, meeting, and supported staff's recommendation to create these two additional loading zone spaces. The loading zone hours would be six AM to three PM, Monday through Saturday, and during the non-loading zone hours, the general public would be able to use both spaces. Staff is supportive of the project, and we do find that it would provide an improved visual anchor at the entry, at the southern entrance to the downtown. The project would be a catalyst for economic development and revitalization in the greater downtown area and Transit Corridor Plan area. Staff would recommend that the city council approve the resolutions to create the two loading zone spaces adjacent to the project site along San Mateo Avenue, as well as the associated architectural review permit. In addition, I'd like to point out that the findings of fact are included as an attachment within the staff report. Additionally, the associated conditions of approval for the project are included as an attachment to the Architectural Review Permit Resolution. Staff consulted with various reviewing departments, and all of those comments were included as conditions of approval. This concludes the second portion of staff's presentation. It's my understanding that the applicant will go into a bit more detail about the architectural elements. I'd be happy to answer any clarifying questions that you have at this moment. Thank you.
Any questions for Matt at this time? Ken?
The, I had a question as far as the, since you mentioned the corridor for the commercial spaces and their access to trash, what about the corner unit? Since, and that is, the corner unit is the one that does not have access to that corridor. Where will its trash be, and how would you be proposing that?
The corner unit would not have direct access to the internal hallway connecting it to the commercial trash room. However, they will still be utilizing that commercial trash room located on the northern edge of the property. My guess is that there is going to be some sort of opening within the residential lobby, which would allow access for that commercial space, allow access to that internal hallway, providing access to their dedicated commercial trash room area.
I'm not really in favor of that, to put that on the tenant. I would like to see a connection. I see, I mean, there's a lot going on, and I know this is a schematic of what, how that might, we might lay out that commercial tenant, but we also have a very large lobby with a ramp right there, and I think there's space to be able to, you know, make a door into that lobby from, you know, from the, you know, from the commercial tenant. But I just don't want, I mean, if we don't provide something, then I just anticipate, I mean, seeing garbage, you know, on garbage day out there. And, you know, I just, I mean...
One thing I would like to note is that we do have a condition of approval stating that garbage shall not be located within the public right-of-way at any time, including at the time of pickup.
Okay.
And if I might add to that, the applicant will be making a presentation as well and may have some thoughts on how to address that concern. Thank you.
Anything else for Matt?
I'll wait for the presentation.
Tom, would you like to address the council?
Once again, I'm Tom Qualia, Signature Development Group, the applicant. I want to read in the record, first, I agree with the staff report for both first tranche and the second tranche. We agree with the conditions of approval that were included at both, I was remiss in not saying that before, and we agree with the staff presentation. With regards to the design, I will address the trash first. So, that particular tenant space is the smallest space, and there are, in fact, two trash areas in our building. So, there's the major trash area down on Taylor Avenue, you see trash room down there. And then we also have a trash room at the other end called the commercial trash. So, what's envisioned for this node tenant would be, they would have the ability to use the other trash room that is down on Taylor. So, that would solve that. The second part of the whole trash issue is, because we're a large enough building, all of the trash for both the commercial and the residence is stored inside and is not put curbside. Recology, we met with them three different times, we're large enough to where they will come, and with the building maintenance manager, they will come and take the trash directly out of the building, dump it, and put the trash back in. So, nothing is brought out on the curb, which is unlike the rest of Main Street, if you will, or San Mateo Avenue. So, that's the first. The second is, I just wanted to address quickly the loading zones. So, there's two new stalls being added, if you will, for the public, and we didn't get into the details when we went to the parking committee, but I think they are allowed to go till three PM. We don't need that much time, there's not that much delivery, so we have no problem shortening that up to the normal, which would be about noon. So, if the loading zone is eight to noon, and then about, you know, eleven thirty is when things kind of get cranked up downtown, then those stalls would then be open to the public. So, I'm fine with a condition of approval that reduces those hours from three o'clock down to noon, because then it's basically two stalls on the curbside available to everybody.
Can you address the necessity to have them?
I think, we just had a back and forth, it's a great idea, so that for the retail, everything's front-loaded, so the retail delivery truck can park, front-load those stalls, and then secondarily, anybody moving in or out of the building, just like our project in San Francisco, there's an early morning loading zone, it's very controlled, so that when a tenant moves in and moves out, they can use the loading zone as well.
Well, I'm just going to say it now, I mean, a tenant can go into the garage and move in, and if anyone familiar with San Mateo Avenue, the delivery trucks don't even look for loading zones, they stop and they double park. So, I'm just thinking that, I mean, this, all this talk about valuable parking, that, you know, make it for loading, it's probably not going to be available for when those deliveries are made.
You know, I'm going to let staff answer the question, because we did not push for the two stalls, if, I'm open to them being unrestricted, it isn't, you know?
To comment on that, we did see the opportunity to provide an area that could be used both for parking and for loading. And so, the idea was to provide an option for trucks not to park in the center of the street, and also for people wanting to move in or out of their units, that there would be some space for some limited time during the week that could be used for loading and unloading. So, the idea was to create additional space. The idea here is that the sidewalk area would be reconfigured to actually add this area, so these would be additional spaces over and above what we have today.
The second part is with regards to the design, and if you would indulge us, I'd love to have Hawaii, our architect, who's been in the trenches with us from day one, to chat a little bit about the evolution and the detailing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Ruane and council members. My name's Hawaii Lai. I'm from YHLA Architects. We are a 10-person firm from Oakland, California. We've been in business for 35 years. Obviously, I haven't been there that long. And, but it's really gratifying to be here again tonight. We were involved with the previous entitlement that was entitled in 2008. So for me, the process has been close to 10 years for me to come back here. So it's extremely satisfying to be back here again. And to start, I'd like to thank Matt and staff for preparing a really well-done staff report. I think it demonstrates very well how the interest and the vision of the developer aligns with the transit corridor plan and also the interest of the city. So, I mean, really, I very, have very few things to say. I just want to focus on two things. One is the really major design decisions that we have. But before I get to that, I do want to expand on the design process that Matt briefly mentioned. We started on this project in September 2013. And our first work session with staff and Mr. Larry Cannon was around January of that, earlier this year. And subsequent to that, we've had three additional review sessions with Larry Cannon and staff prior to submitting to the city. So by the time we got our plans into the planning department, we worked out a lot of changes to color. What you see today, the warm color palette was a result of that work. The balcony detailing, the use of brick veneer at the ground floor, the use of awnings and sunscreens, all those came from our collaboration with staff and Mr. Larry Cannon. So I thi- I think, you know, the result speaks for itself, and I think it's a testament to the process. Now, getting into the actual design elements, I don't want to touch on the tiny details. So I, I do want to focus on the main decisions. One was the corner. I think everyone agrees that it's a very, very prominent site. And I think it will do a tremendous job of setting this site, framing the gateway to the downtown neighborhood instead of what we currently have, an empty lot and some buildings that definitely seen better days. Now, as far as the design is concerned, we want it to, the corner tower to stand out, but still maintain its cohesiveness with the rest of the building. We don't want something just sticks out for the sake of staking out. And to do that, we really kept the color palette complementary to the rest of the building, but introduced some different, uh, different proportions, if you will. If you notice, the windows are taller and skinnier at that location. We also have unique detailing such as metal sunscreens, a sweeping awning on the ground floor, and really strong corners and pitch roof at the corner. So everything about it comes together and speaks to it being a corner, you know, a focus for the project and also for downtown. And then as we move down towards San Mateo Avenue, again, if you focus on the board, you'll see our main focus is really to break down the massing by using a lot of articulation. One main goal is to reduce each element or module to about 25 feet, and which is what the transit corridor plan had recommended as part of the design guidelines. And additionally, we use the very light beige, light cream color as an element to catch your eye. And as you move down the project, you notice we dropped it down to, to a two-story element towards the very end. I think that's an acknowledgement of the existing buildings, which are predominantly two stories in height. So we're going to focus on making a giant facade look much more articulated and in character with the downtown building. And then as we move to the Mastic side and Taylor side, I want to touch on the unique opportunity and also challenge that we face in this project. We have frontage on San Mateo Avenue, on Taylor Avenue, and also on Mastic. So unlike a lot of infield projects, we have to do a 360 design. So every part of the building is articulated. And the challenge in that is we have very different characters along San Mateo versus Mastic. And Taylor in itself is very transitional from El Camino versus heading down towards Mastic. So the challenge is how do we respond to the different context, but still keep the building looking as a single project versus a mishmash of multiple different concepts? So on Mastic Avenue, our decision was to use and introduce a new, a more residential design material, which is a siding. It gives it a little bit more texture, brings it a smaller scale to, to that facade. And that allows us to also use a lot of trim and board and bat and detailing between windows and around windows. And recalls a little bit of the, the craftsman style that you see in a lot of residential buildings. So that, and that treatment, and based on some feedback we got from the Architectural Review Committee and also the Planning Commission, we wrapped that treatment all the way to the north-facing facade as well. So I, I think, to sum it up, it really is a product of collaboration and just everyone pitching in and listening to what everyone has to say about the design. And really, I think it's, I'm very confident that this will help transform the downtown, especially this part of downtown. And I think everyone can be very proud of the building we have. Thank you.
Great. Any questions for the architects? Okay. Thank you very much. Members of the public like to address us?
Robert Rico. I just wanted to support the two loading zones. I complained for a long time about double parking of the delivery trucks because there weren't back access. So having even too limited down there definitely will help keep the trucks off of the street. So I hope you support that.
Thank you.
Russ Steins, Reed. I just want you guys to know that I am in support of this building. I think it's, the existing height limits are great. I'm a little concerned with the parking. So I do ask you guys, when this does happen to, you know, if you see a problem, maybe somebody can implement permitted parking if, you know, it does impact the neighborhood. This instance is great. The downtown, where the buildings are, is great. But when the, if the TCP does pa- I mean, well, if your measure N does pass, is when I start to be concerned because basically measure N gives you five, my vote, without asking me what I think. So I just want you guys to know that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ben Kohnfleeb, Drive. I am 100% A-OK with the aesthetics. My comment may be more of a, a management policy, actually. And it has to do with the use of the balconies on the building and how management addresses what can go out there and what can't, and what that looks like. I've seen many beautiful developments with cluttered, ugly stuff on the balconies, and it, and it really kind of ruins much of the aesthetic for me.
I wanted to say I'm also in support of the last two that you're considering tonight. And also, I know that they won't be speaking, we're not really, they won't be speaking to us about measure N. But to, just to comment, there will be an opportunity for us to have a parking structure if measure N is passed. So something to consider.
Thank you. Any comments from the applicant regarding the use or non-use of the balconies?
Two responses. One, just to point out, the Mastic elevations were dropped down. You know, they're about five to seven feet shorter than the rest of the building as we transition around the corner. So that was another thing that we did with the building. Great comment about the balconies, and quite frankly, I completely forgot about that. Here, we spent all this time on those beautiful buildings and spectacular balconies, and, and we're, we don't want laundry hanging up there. So we will work on our restrictions. We do have strict restrictions. It is a rental building. I would, I would, I echo his comment. I hope, I would hate to see anything out there than a couple of nice chairs and a little bit of table for somebody to sit out there and watch the parade. So we will work with staff to make sure that we get that incorporated into, into our, our management side.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, there is actually a condition of approval that requires that the property management plan specifically address the use of balconies, what can be stored and cannot be stored on balconies. So as Mr. Qualia has indicated, they will need to address this very issue in their property management plan. Thank you.
All right. Ken?
Well, while he's up there, I just want to compliment the architect. And, and Larry Cannon has been, you know, gold for, you know, for this, for this city for many years. And I, as a, as a designer, I rarely have, I can't remember where I've ever had any objection to what Larry has recommended, maybe my project or something. But, but I really like, and I know there's been a lot of tweaking of the design and everything, and I just really like looking at it. I understand, you know, all the, you know, being an architect, I understand all the lingo and everything. The rhythm, the, you know, the proportions, even, you know, even the, the different window shapes and everything works well. I do want, there is a concern about the brick veneer, and I'm assuming that that is just real, real brick, but mini, mini brick being applied, you know, to a, you know, to a substructure. So it will be, it's a lot cheaper to do than just real brick anyway. My, I do want to also have a concern, and I'm sure, you know, you've experienced it, but canvas awnings. I love canvas awnings, but over time, and it's usually the short amount of time, they fade, and they get damaged, or they, they show their wear. And so just want to know how you speak of that and how, how we can get it to keep looking the way it does in the drawing, you know, for a long time.
So I went back to the...
Thank you, thank you very much. It's a great-looking building.
I went back to San Mateo Avenue before the hearing, and 90% of the awnings are material, canvas or some other material. The other percentage of the awnings are an actual structure, if you will, part of the edifice of the building. And we have both of those. As you saw, we have the, the entry canopies over a couple places, and then we have the awning canopies. So to take it to a, a louver on the ground floor or to a metal awning would not be consistent with what exists in downtown. And so we would like to stay with the material at this point in time so that it has a little bit of a softer feel and a little bit more complimentary feel. You know, I look at, I look at Starbucks, I looked at the Mediterranean Market, and they're in good shape and they're maintained. Once again, we're going to own and maintain the building. So I'm pretty confident that we'll be, we'll be good to go with the materials.
Good. Anything else for the applicant? Okay, at this time, we're going to close the public hearing. And once we close, you'll be precluded from speaking to us again about this. Is there a motion to close? Does that move?
Second.
Motion is second to close the public hearing? On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, we have two items. Any discussion before we adopt some resolutions?
Through the chair?
Michael?
If, if we decide not to put the loading zones in, can we still have parking spaces available and then evaluate this at some later time without impacting the project?
Yes, you can. So the idea would be that the sidewalk area would be reconfigured to add the two parking spaces, but those areas would not be signed to allow for loading. They would simply be used for parking.
Okay. And I, my thought process is that, you know, once we understand what the turnover is of, of the apartments and we know what type of businesses are there, it might be prudent to wait and know those things before we designate those spots, and especially with the concern over the number of parking spots in the area. If we could add parking, even if we may have to take one or two away later, I think might be a more prudent course. So my thought. Thank you.
And then again, another option that was mentioned earlier is that the timeframe, instead of 7:00 to 3:00, could be reduced. That, that's another option for you to consider as well.
I would think at the inception of the building, you're definitely going to need loadings. I mean, when it first gets started and up and running until it actually gets established, though. That's just my thought on that. Any of the discussion or action by the council? Item number five, adopt a resolution approving installation of two loading zone spaces adjacent to the project site along San Mateo Avenue?
Through, through the chair? So though, will we have an additional review process or is that, or is that going to be left to the app, you know, to the, to the applicant and staff? Or, I mean, because we're, we're dealing with the resolution to add two loading zones as designated in the spots that they are designated? And if I have an objection to it, then I want to be able to say that now? Or what flexibility in changing that is there?
We do not anticipate another review. So the, the plans indicate the two spaces that could be used for loading between 7:00 and, and 3:00 o'clock as currently proposed. So you could indicate that you would like that timeframe shortened? Or that you would want those spaces used only for parking and not for loading? Those are a couple of options. But whatever you direct tonight or take action on tonight, you would not expect to come back again?
I don't want to belabor this over loading zones. I mean, we're a $40 million project, and we're fighting over signage. I'll wait. My, my concern is that it's not going to be enforced, is that loading zones will be signed and there will be, you know, commercial res- you know, customers using them. And, and at a time when a delivery truck comes and, you know, and they're not available, and so they, they still double park. I don't see a real need for tenant use because they have the garage and there's elevators. So at the most, I'd say, you know, one loading zone. I, I really, I also have a concern about the tenants. I mean, they, I mean, the, the commercial tenants. To have a loading zone in front of their, in front of their establishment, which would be a valuable parking space, you know, for them, you know, where do you, which one do you select? So I'm, if, if, if the loading zone is needed, I'd go with one, but definitely not two.
Through the chair?
Go ahead, please, I haven't got to speak yet.
I haven't. I, I understand everybody's objections and all the other things. I'd like to suggest a compromise, that we do one loading zone and that we restrict the hours from 6:00 to 10:00. And that way, most commercial properties aren't open until 10:00, and we wouldn't be blocking any of those. If there are problems with the loading, people not recognizing that, I'm sure they can call the community service people or the police, and they'll send someone over and give them a ticket. And after a few times of getting tickets, they won't do it anymore. So we can do that, try it out for six months after everything is built, and see if it works. So that's my, my suggestion.
I was, I was thinking to compromise was to shorten the time to the noon, as we had indicated. So maybe you go from the 8:00 to noon. Just because if we're talking also for the potential, we have folks there that may use it for moving as well as the businesses. If we want to go down to, to one, I guess it's a compromise we all can live with for now. If we all can say that and do one, and if we want to narrow it down from the 3:00 o'clock and roll it back to a sooner time, at least there's a start. We obviously can always change that. If not, correct?
That's correct.
See? So we even have an option to come back. Okay. If that works with everybody, then maybe that we can, we can agree to that.
So what is if that works for everybody?
Yeah.
I think, I think we're down, I think we're down to one. And I think we have said, instead of 3:00, 3:00 p.m., are we saying to make it earlier? I was suggesting...
I was saying, I was suggesting 6:00 to 10:00. And the reason I said 10:00 is because most commercial places open at 10:00, and that would increase by one the commercial, the availability of customers.
And I was going to suggest 12:00. So we've got 10:00 and 12:00. So anywhere in there.
You know, anywhere, whatever, something. We'll shorten the hours, we'll make it one.
I guess we can go to, there's a, there's a suggestion, go to 11:00. Okay.
And we'll do that.
Okay. So what do we need to do to modify the resolutions?
So if you simply give us the direction, and I'm hearing, I think, it would be Monday through Saturday, and the loading zone would be one stall, not two, but one stall. And I think, I'm hearing, 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., again, Monday through Saturday. Correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Based on that direction, we would so modify the resolution.
Okay. So modify the, we can introduce a resolution based on those modifications?
Yes.
Okay. Would someone like to introduce the resolution?
I'll go ahead and introduce the resolution as amended.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. And our last item, six, adopt a resolution approving an architectural review permit for the Plaza Mixed Use Project at four oh six, four eighteen, San Mateo Avenue.
Oh, introduce the resolution.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
Wonderful. Congratulations to all of us. Good stuff. Item number nine, public comment on item not on this agenda. It is the council's policy to refer matters raised in this forum to staff for investigation-
May I say something before you adjourn, Mr. Mayor?
No, I'm afraid you can't right now.
Well, I was compelled to drive all the way here watching you on-
I'm afraid this item is over.
The people live in the people's feet from home. Good night, everyone.
You have public comment. You have public comment, if you want to speak under public comment, as long as it's not on this agenda.
This gentleman said that I can say things that are not on the agenda.
Well, he's not the mayor.
Okay. Well, I'm sorry, well, let him say just not even three minutes.
Wait, wait just a minute. Wait just a minute. Public comment on item not on this agenda. Is the council's policy to refer matters raised in this forum to staff for investigation interaction where appropriate? The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendaized pursuant to state law. Would anyone like to address the council under public comment?
I would.
Yeah. Tell us your name and your street.
My name is Aison Alotat, and I reside on Pine Street. I apologize for coming in so abruptly. I was watching the game, and I changed the channel and saw the council meeting, so I just wanted to thank you, Mr. Mayor, for all your hard work, because I saw you on TV regarding the pipe explosions, and I'm sorry if I'm emotional and cry, but when that explosion happened, I felt it. So I've seen you on news, and I see all the hard work that you and the fellow council members are doing, so I just wanted to say thank you first and foremost for all your diligence, and sorry for being a blubbermouth. I just want to say, as someone who has been living in San Bruno for twenty-seven to twenty-eight years, practically my entire life, that I love this town, and I want to go off the comments of this woman right here, who has been working here for so many decades, and will be a hundred something after this project is completed, that as for the current generation, I just hope that we can collaborate and be cohesive, and that you can inform us of every step along the way. And Rico, Mr. Medina, I just want to say that you putting your foot down so firmly and telling these outsiders from Oakland and Menlo Park and everywhere in the Bay Area, but not San Bruno, that we are a tight-knit community that's special, and I think that it's been this way for so many decades, because maybe, maybe Mr. Wells, or the Marshall family, or whoever it is that runs San Bruno, because they own so much property, maybe it's because they have their view or their vision, but they don't run San Bruno, and I just think that this trans corridor plan is a way for us to move forward, and I hope that the residents who are a little bit ambiguous about what's going on can look towards the children who are growing up, what the future is going to be for people who need to promote business, and for the well-being of San Bruno. So I just, I felt compelled to say that, and I just hope that, like the woman who said before in public comment, that we need to work together as a team and keep each other informed, and this is a big deal for our community. So, I just hope that we can collaborate and work together instead of against each other, and to take in consideration the less fortunate as well who need housing, and to be the big city with a big, the little city with a big heart. So, thank you for your time, and good night, and hopefully we win tomorrow.
Thank you. Anyone else under public comment?
I'm Harry Peterson, senior court. This is a gear shift moment. This is a technical subject. OCR, well, you know what a PDF is, a file, so you can look at documents. A PDF that has OCRd ability, optical character reading ability, built into it, lets you search a document for any word you want to. How many of you know that, just for a survey? Really? Mr. Ibera, you know that?
I heard of it.
Wow.
I've heard of it.
Okay. Why is this important? Commissioner, or Councilperson Salazar said, gee, I scanned the entire TCP looking for density, and I don't know if I saw all of it. Well, if you really wanted to know, and it was a PDF that was OCRd, you could just type in density, and it would lead you. Every time you pushed the enter key, it would lead you to the next occurrence. It's very handy. Why am I doing this? You're probably going to ask, what is he telling this for? Okay? This is because the city staff is not all consistent about whether they create PDFs when they post them to the web that have that searchability. The searchability is very important. PDFs have been in use for twenty years. They've been OCRd usually by government agencies and businesses for the past ten years. San Bruno has been doing it occasionally for the past three years. There is confusion about whether they even want to do it at all, because there's a new magic agenda system coming up, and no one wants to do anything until that's introduced. You don't have to wait for that. I'm asking you to request staff to make every PDF you post to the web searchable. It's a simple matter of public access to government information. If you would please do that, then I could search them, Councilperson Salazar could search them, all of you could search a document and find it. And in addition, staff will find other benefits, such as when you have a two-hundred-and-seventy-seven page packet, as you do tonight, staff could put the page, put page numbers electronically onto all those pages. So when you said, you see that reference to density? It's on page one-hundred-and-eighty-three. You could all take a look at it if you wanted to. So, I'm telling you that staff is not focusing on this, because they have bigger fish to fry, but if you told them to please do that, I'm sure they would, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Through the chair. One comment on that. The transit corridor plan is in fact searchable, and I did do that. The word density came up two-hundred times, but I just couldn't find the information I was looking for.
Thank you so much. I can tell you, there are, most of the council packets are not OCRd.
Right.
Maybe twenty percent of the planning packets are OCRd. It can make a hell of a difference, and thanks for your-
I agree. Thank you.
Robert Rico, Seventh Avenue. I'm not the mayor. I directed her wrong. I thought you had already called for number nine. Honorable mayor and council, I'm here tonight as your trustee to the San Mateo County Mosquito and Vector Control District to give you a short update. One of the actions your district takes place on a yearly basis is to hold a public information meeting, and this meeting is moved around throughout the county yearly, so as to give more local residents easy access. Last night, it was held in the city of San Mateo in their council chambers. Real quickly, the speakers were Rosendo Rodriguez, the interim district manager, Dr. Scott Smith, who is a trustee, and is also clinical associate professor at Stanford University of Medicine, Brian Weber, the district's assistant manager, and John Holick, Western Regional Vector Control Center Life Sciences. He's one of the pest control, pesticide suppliers that we use. One of the messages that they repeated was that here in San Mateo County and in San Bruno, one species or more, species or more of San Bruno, of mosquitoes can live and breed year-round. So continue to dump standing water. That continues to be the easiest way to help fight the bite. A second source of breeding mosquitoes is pools of water, usually under homes for, from broken pipes. As always, questions can always be directed to the district at three four four eight five nine two. Thank you, and the city staff and your residents for continuing to help fight the bite.
Thank you. Anyone else under public comment? All right, we're going to move right on to continuing conduct of business. Item C. Adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with West Coast Associates for design of the Genovin Avenue Sewer and Water Main Replacement Project in an amount not to exceed two-hundred-and-thirteen thousand six-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars, and appropriating two-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand five-hundred dollars from the Water Capital Fund, and two-hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars from the wastewater capital fund.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. Jimmy Tan, from, city engineer, city engineer from the Public Services Department. The city completed the ten-year prioritized work plan that combined individual projects identified in the water and sewer master plans. As part of the consent decree, sewer master plan identified non-capacity improvement projects that must be implemented by 2019. Genovin Project is one of those projects. Several years ago, a sanitary sewer overflow from the existing sewer main underneath the homes caused significant damage to the backyard of five-fourteen Cherry Avenue and five-seventeen Chestnut Avenue. Due to this incident, and the fact that the sewer main runs directly under residential properties, the Genovin Avenue Sewer Main Replacement Project was identified as one of the improvement projects that needed to be implemented. The project will be designed to relieve flows through existing sewer mains between Chestnut, Beach, and Oak Avenues by diverting flows from two-hundred-and-ninety homes into the new sewer pipeline, thus significantly reducing flows into the sewer main that runs under the residence. The project consists of installing approximately thirteen-hundred feet of eight-inch and ten-inch sewer pipelines, and sixteen-hundred feet of eight- and ten-inch water pipelines along Genovin Avenue between Cherry and Cypress. The water pipeline is concurrently being replaced due to the age of the infrastructure, and to minimize construction impacts to the public. Completion of the project will provide residents with more reliable sewer and water infrastructure that will prevent future water main breaks and sewer overflows. The city issued an RFP for the design of the project in September 2014, and received seven proposals, then conducted an evaluation of these proposals. The city has used various consultants on, and different projects depending on consultant's experience. As you hear tonight, West Coast has been selected on three projects because of their project-specific experience and expertise. Due to the complexity of the deep sewer design, in Genovin, West Coast Associates' proposal included an innovative trenchless approach that minimizes trenching and public impact during construction. The project manager has also successfully managed numerous trenchless projects similar to the proposed method for the project. Therefore, staff is recommending West Coast to provide engineering design services for this project. The consultant's services for this work is two-hundred-and-thirteen thousand six-seventy-five, and the scope of work includes preparation of technical memorandum, geotechnical investigation, surveying, detailed final design, bid documents, and construction support services. The design will take approximately six months to complete, and the construction impacts will be evaluated during the design phase and communicated with the neighborhood in a public meeting. The staff anticipates the construction of this project will be awarded during the 2015 to 2016 fiscal year, and anticipate the project will be constructed by the end of the next year, 2015.
Great. Any questions of staff? Action by the council?
I'll introduce the resolution.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina, excuse me, Vice Mayor Medina.
Whichever.
Aye.
Did I get Councilmember Ibera? I'm really bad at this.
Not yet. Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
Will note for the record that I'm pretending to be the city clerk, and the resolution passed five zero.
Okay. Item ten D. Adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with West Coast Associates for design of the San Mateo Avenue Sewer and Water Main Replacement Project in an amount not to exceed three-hundred-and-eighteen thousand four-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars, and appropriating two-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand five-hundred dollars from the Water Capital Fund, and four-hundred thousand dollars from the wastewater capital fund.
Thank you. This project's also from a ten-year work plan that identified as one of the capacity project that must be implemented by 2019. The primary purpose of the San Mateo Avenue Sewer and Water Main Replacement is to alleviate capacity-deficient pipeline along Taylor Avenue and prevent future sanitary sewer overflows by rerouting the flow to the new pipeline. The project consists of approximately two-thousand feet of eighteen-inch sewer pipeline, and twenty-two-hundred feet of eight-inch water pipeline along San Mateo Avenue between Taylor and Angus. The existing sewer mains in San Mateo Avenue is located at a very shallow depth within the sidewalks, and which will be diverted into the new pipeline along San Mateo Avenue. Existing water is also concurrently being replaced due to the age of the infrastructure, and to minimize construction impacts. Completion of this project would provide residents and businesses along San Mateo Avenue with more reliable sewer and water infrastructure. The RFP was issued concurrently with the one for Genovin Project, and the staff received six proposals for this project. Based on evaluations, staff is recommending West Coast, again, to provide engineering design services. Since the project involves construction in a downtown area, minimizing impacts to the establishments are crucial for the success of the project. West Coast successfully completed similar projects for the cities of Milpitas and Yuba City as well. Scope of work is very similar to the Genovin Project, has a technical memorandum, geotechnical investigation, surveying, final design, bid documents, and conducting public meetings and workshops, and construction support services. The design, it's, plant is going to take approximately six months, and the public outreach and workshops will be conducted during the design phase with the businesses, residents, and property owners to obtain comments that will assist the city to plan the project in a manner that will minimize impact during construction. Staff anticipates the construction of this project will be awarded at the same time with the Genovin Project, to obtain better construction bids. So staff is recommending a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract for this project.
Thank you. Any questions?
Ken, go ahead. I have a question. It's my understanding that there is, the infrastructure, the old infrastructure on San Mateo Avenue is, is in the sidewalks and in the, along the curbs. Now that we're trying to get the water mains and the sewer mains out of the way, what about the storm drains? Is that also, you know, in that area along the sidewalks? Because it's been a long time that I've heard, or we've learned, that the reason why trees don't grow well in the downtown is because of these culverts in this infrastructure that's under the sidewalks. And so I'm wondering, is this something that is also going to be addressed, or hopefully be addressed, you know, during this construction?
Currently, we don't have any plans to replace the storm drain that is part, but we can go ahead and evaluate that, and determine whether or not it is warranted for replacement as well.
What is the status of the storm drains? Is it, I mean, they're, they're not, they're not, they're not at a, at a stage to be replaced or anything, or have they been reviewed? Because it is, you know, in my opinion, it's a true hamper to beautifying the downtown.
Councilmember Ibera, we do have a storm drain master plan that was recently approved by the council. The, there are certain areas within the city that has been identified as improvements for the, for the storm drain. However, the funding has not been identified yet for the storm drain improvements. Now, in the downtown area, we currently don't have any plans for implementing any kind of improvements in addition to the, to the sewer and, and water. But that is certainly something that we would like to take a look at, along with other improvements in the San Mateo right away.
Through the chair. Irene. Since this construction is going to be at the very same spot for most of it, that the new plaza construction is happening, are you going to make efforts to coordinate the two?
Yes. The staff has been talking to the planning department already regarding this project and the schedules regarding construction of their development, plus our construction work.
Okay, so that, we're not going to rip up the street, stick stuff in, rip it up again, and so it's all going to be coordinated?
That's correct.
Okay, great. Thank you.
In addition to that, Councilwoman O'Connell, is, this is actually one of the conditions we put in for the plaza, because currently the sewer capacity is not there, and this project needs to be completed so that it can connect to the sewer line.
Excellent. Okay. Thank you.
Any action on item ten D?
You took my question.
I'm sorry. I'll introduce the resolution.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor Wayne?
Aye.
Item 10E, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to do three things. Execute a construction contract with Maguire and Hester for the Olympic Pump Station and Force Main Replacement Project in the amount of $2,294,964 with a construction contingency of $350,000. Also execute a contract for construction inspection services with West Yost Associates in an amount not to exceed $228,902. And appropriate an additional $350,000 from the wastewater capital fund.
My name's Wing Wong, Principal Engineer, Public Services. The Olympic Pump Station is one of six sewer pump stations operated by the city. The pump station is located in a residential neighborhood in the northwestern part of the city, near the city limits of South San Francisco, and it collects wastewater from about 467 homes in the vicinity. The pump station and force main are both over 50 years old and has reached the end of the useful life. The equipment is antiquated and in very poor condition and in constant need of maintenance and repairs. In order to meet current health and safety standards and to avoid potential sanitary sewer overflow, SSOs, the pump station and the force main both need to be completely This project consists of demolishing the existing facilities and constructing a new pump station building with new pumps, motors, wet wells, electrical controls, emergency standby generator, and the new construction of a new force main. In April 2013, the city council awarded the design contract to hydro science engineers for this project. Contract documents were completed in August and the project was advertised for bid. The city received a total of five bids on October 2nd, 2014, and Maguire and Hester submitted the lowest bid in the amount of $22,294,964. Staff has reviewed the bid submitted and references and determined that Maguire and Hester's was a qualified, responsive, and a responsible bidder. Staff is also recommending approval of a contract with West Yost Associates to provide construction inspection services due to the time needed to provide adequate inspection and ensure that the effective delivery of the project. The city received proposal from two consultants for the inspection services and West Yost's proposal was more complete and detailed compared to the second consultant. West Yost's proposal in the amount of $228,902 is also substantially lower than the other consultant. And they are currently, West Yost is currently completing construction inspection work of the College Pump Station with excellent results and feedback. At the time the design contract was awarded in April 2013, the preliminary estimate for construction portion of this project was $1.9 million. And this lowest bid by Maguire and Hester came in at $2.29 million. An additional $350,000 from the wastewater capital fund is requested as an added appropriation in the proposed 2014 to 15 capital improvement program to bring to a new total budget of three point, approximately 3.5 million for the completion of this project. In summary, staff is recommending the following action. Execute a construction contract with Maguire and Hester in the amount of $22,294,964 with a construction contingency of $350,000. Number two, execute a contract with inspection services with West Yost Associate in the amount not to exceed $228,902. And number three, appropriate an additional amount of, in $350,000 from the wastewater capital fund. With that, I'm here to answer questions.
Any questions? Action by the council?
I'll introduce, oh, I'll introduce the resolution.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Mayor Wayne?
Aye.
And finally, 10F, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a maintenance services agreement with the City of South San Francisco to provide traffic signal maintenance and sewer line video inspections.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is an inter-agency agreement between San Bruno and City of South San Francisco for maintaining our signal system, which consists of 18 intersections throughout the city as well as CCTV or videotaping of our sewer lines as needed. In 2009, there was the original agreement that was entered between us and South San Francisco for maintaining the signals. Prior to that, we had an agreement with a private firm at considerably higher cost and less responsive service. Since 2009, South San Francisco has provided the service to us and we've been, been very happy with this cooperation. In 2013, we added a part, a section to this agreement to also include videotaping of our sewer system. And that agreement has been in place. However, we have not been using that as much as we need to because we do have a backup agreement with another company to provide that service. In this year, we were approached by the City of South San Francisco to do a modification to this agreement. They are providing this service also to Colma and Brisbane, and they are providing similar service to those two agencies. And all these agencies are subject to the new modification to the agreement, which includes an adjustment to the rates, as well as an increase in the number of signals, in signalized intersections we have through our city. We have one extra signal that's at the intersection of San Mateo Avenue and Huntington that was resulted as part of the new grade separation with Caltrain. So we have now a total of 18 intersections that need to be maintained, as well as additional services needed throughout the year besides the regular maintenance. The addition of about 10 to 20% increase in the hourly wages as well as the regular maintenance would cost anywhere from $4,000 to $7,000 in the $40,000 to $50,000 range that we pay them every year. The CCTV of the sewer lines are not changing from the 2013. The only change will be from the 2009 agreement on the rates and regular maintenance of the signals. So at this time, we would like to ask for approval of the resolution to authorize the city manager to execute this new agreement with South San Francisco to maintain our signals and also provide the sewer line video inspection services.
Questions?
Through the chair. So would we be then relying on South San Francisco for the video rather than the other outside contractor?
We can. At this time, we are evaluating our capabilities to perhaps provide the service in-house. We do have a budget item and we have an agency looking at our system to see whether we can provide this with purchase of equipment and also personnel to be able to do that in-house in the future.
So for right now, what you're saying is you want to be able to still use the outside contractor in addition to still use South San Francisco? And I'm saying if we're going to be paying for it through South City, let's get the value. Unless there's more costs. I'm trying to understand, so if we have this opportunity here with the City of South San Francisco, I'd like to be able to use that if we're already paying a certain, unless it's per video. So, and I also, unless I, I know it's getting late, it said add the new rates will be, and added $7,000 to $10,000, and I thought you had quoted a smaller amount, but I may have just not heard it correctly.
So, let me, let me clarify, the amount is not paid unless the service is used.
Okay, that's what I needed here. So it's paid whether it's South City or the outside contractor upon use.
That's correct.
Thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Through the chair.
Michael?
We don't have any, anything to compare South City's rate on the lights right now. We didn't put that out to bid. We don't have any idea if it's competitive.
We actually have checked the rates with other agencies as well as the, the private firm. For example, right now, we are paying $125 per signalized intersection per 2009 rate and that's going to go to 160. The outside agency had quoted us 208, this is back five years ago, and they're substantially higher now. The same thing with the hourly rate, the outside agency was already exceeding what South San Francisco is, is quoting us now, and they exceeded that amount five years ago.
Okay.
So overall, this is substantially less. And also, response time has been much better with South San Francisco. Based on our supervisor, our street supervisor, this has been a much more superior in terms of the quality of the service and responsiveness than the previous contractor who was Simmons and Republic prior to 2009.
And for the video service, it says in the report that they're comparable to private sector, but they have a three-hour minimum that we have to pay. Is that also what the private company does?
Yes, that, that's, that's very comparable and actually less than the private company. So we are, we're pretty confident. We haven't really used them that much for the video services yet, but we do have them as backup in case of an emergency that we'd be able to get them out there as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or action?
I just wanted to echo that, as being a part of the subcommittee for the surface infrastructure, we did review, we were in the discussions and made those decisions five years ago because of the cost differences and the reliability and response time of South San Francisco.
If there's anything else, I'll go ahead and introduce the resolution for the maintenance service agreement with the City of South San Francisco.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera?
Aye.
Mayor Wayne?
Aye.
Number 11, a report of commission boards and committees, there aren't any this evening, comments from council members. We were to have a report from Councilmember O'Connell, but she wants to hold that off, awaiting a little more information at our next meeting. I want to remind everyone to vote next Tuesday and in adjournment tonight, I'd like to have a brief moment of silence in memory of a very dear friend, former mayor of the city of, of Daly City, Al Taliya, who was a very active in this, in this community for many, many years and a very, very good friend. So please join me in a moment of silence. I thank you and this meeting is adjourned until November 25th, right here at the senior center.